Okay, welcome to the city council meeting of April twenty eighth. For board and commission interviews, could the clerk please call the meeting to order?
Yes, of course. Vice Mayor Bert.
Here.
Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Mayor Du Bois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Here.
Seven present.
Great, so I think we're starting with candidates for the Human Resources Commission. If Sinida de Toral is here, let's start with her.
Yes, Ms. Sinida de Ture, if you can turn on your video and unmute yourself, we will begin your ten minute interview.
Hey. Hi, Sinida, so I think you've done this before. So ten minutes and we'll start with you if you want to make an opening statement and then we'll ask you some questions.
Great, thank you. Good evening, council members. To refresh your minds, as you know, my name is Sinida and I joined the HRC in October twenty twenty to finish Commissioner Lee's term. And I'm here seven months later with a much better idea of what the work on the HRC involves, and I'm keen to get a full three year term. It's been a busy seven months with CBDG and His Rap funding decisions as well as disturbing rise in hate crimes across the nation, but also here in Palo Alto. On an uplifting note, getting to see the fruition of the chair and vice chair's hard work around listening to the voices of current and historical black and brown community members and seeing the need for us to do a better job of making all members of our community feel like they belong. I'm much more aware now of the amount of work the HRC requires as well as how complex these issues can be and the need for truly compassionate listening to all points of view. I bring in multicultural perspective, born of a Swiss dad and a South Indian mom and being raised and educated in Montreal, Canada. As a permanent resident who doesn't get to vote, I feel it's my privilege to get to serve on the HRC and I hope to continue doing so if you choose to give me another three year term. I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you, that's very nice comments. Who would like to start off the questions? Uh, customer of Cormac.
Misty Ture, welcome back. I don't need to ask you the the two two word question again. Can you tell us one thing that has surprised you about your service on the HRC?
Um, well, I guess two things really quickly, how much work it is, but also having been as a scientist, having been someone who's written grants, I expected the grant reveal process to be terribly painful and that I would really dislike it, and I did not. I found it was so interesting and after the five, six hour meetings, I got off the calls refreshed and fired up and ready to go. That's been surprising to me that I could actually enjoy reading grants. Pleasant surprise.
Thanks so much. I'm not sure I've been excited at the end of any five hours zoom meeting yet, so that says a lot.
Well, that was the question I was going to ask you, but so you said it's a lot of work. Do you have any thoughts on just kind of the size of the commission? Obviously, there was a lot going on in this last year, maybe more than normal. But how have you guys been able to split up the work and how is the overall commission worked together?
Yeah, well, I've only known the five, the size of five, but certainly seeing, having been through the CBDG and His Rap, which I think I've been told is the most intense and sort of demanding period, uh, month. Having seen that, I could understand why having seven members would be very helpful. I think that spreading the work and and having more folks involved would certainly be helpful as well. I think that having seven would make it a little easier also to talk to various commissioners around issues. It's a little tricky with the whole. You know, the board rule, the Brown rules around not speaking to, you know, about a topic beyond a certain number, it makes it a little bit extra tricky having such a small board. So I think both on the work front as well as on the ability to have open discussions privately would be helpful.
Uh, customer Stone.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And um, well, yeah, what one Sinida definitely definitely agreed, having served on the HRC, the CDBG and His Rap is the most hectic time. So you got through that. Well done. It's a little easier after after that, fortunately. Were you on, and I'm sorry if you if you said this, were you on either one of those subcommittees?
I was on CBDG.
Okay, sounds good. And how did you, how have you found your kind of ability to be able to kind of collaborate with your your colleagues and and work together well in those in in both kind of that subcommittee setting, but also in the greater, just kind of the greater HR with the with the greater HRC. Can you just kind of describe your, how you work with your peers and and navigating some of those complexities and restrictions with the Brown Act?
Sure. Well, working with, I was working with the vice chair on CBDG and it was an absolute pleasure. We were working with Arum McBull, sorry, I was blanking on the name as well as Valerie, and it was, I had no idea what to expect, but had just read all the grants and and had come up with questions and there was just this beautiful collaboration where we were basically often on the same page, but had a lot of stuff filled in by Arum. And so that whole process within the the subcommittee was again, a pleasure, surprisingly so, a delight for me. And then coming to the larger group, it was a little tricky and and painful, I would say, because we were given criteria on how we were supposed to assess the various grants, very specific criteria. And sometimes we had to make decisions and really stand for things that met those criteria and then also make those clear to the other commissioners who felt upset or disappointed that a particular organization wasn't getting funding. And so that was a little tricky to to communicate, especially given like the length of discussions that had happened for us to get to that point and make those recommendations. So I think that, again, maybe not to push, I wasn't planning on lobbying for a bigger HRC, but I could imagine how an additional person could have helped that. Made it a little bit easier. And for myself, what I learned is that the process was not over when we made those decisions, that I needed to really keep good notes and be able to pull up all the relevant data in the moment when folks were asking very pointed questions. So that was definitely a learning thing for myself.
Great, thank you. And and one one final question, how do you see the the HRC's role as more, do you see it more as an as an advocacy body that really needs to kind of be out in front of issues and bringing it forward to kind of the the council's attention and and advocating for those for those issues, or do you see it more as a as a body that takes direction from council and and implements those kind of?
Just super quick, you got three minutes left and Vice Mayor Burris has a question, so.
Okay, all right. So I actually think it's both because it seems that appropriate that councils sometimes task the HRC with something like, he can't wait last summer. But I also think that we're supposed to be the ones with the ear on the ground, listening to the community and making sure that we bring stuff forth to you and making sure that those things are being heard. So I would say that it's both, and I don't mean to cop out with that question. I just think that there's times where both are, both are applicable.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Bert.
Great. I just wanted to follow up on the His Rep discussion. And do you think that the criteria are over prescriptive? So that's the first half. And the second is, given the the range of applicants and the needs, how would you describe the funding that we have compared to the needs and the qualified providers?
On the whether or not it's over prescribed, I would say that I don't have enough experience yet to be able to say whether those were the best criteria. And in many ways, I understand these are big organizations that have come together with rules that probably make sense. I would be better positioned after probably another round to say whether there were differences that should be implemented. And then, what was the second piece? I'm sorry, I already forgot.
The the whether the the alignment between the funding and the qualified providers and the needs.
There were a lot of really qualified providers and it was very difficult to shrink what each of them shave off bits of what they needed to do very important work. So I think that more funding would have been great, ideal, even that's after tossing certain organizations that we felt were not really meeting the criteria that we had.
Yes, we have a little bit less than a minute if you just want to make a final wrap up.
Sure. Well, I'm looking forward to digging in more deeply into all the different issues that we've already looked at in the past seven months, but also deepening, for example, my work with as PAPD, HRC liaison and and growing my budding relationship with respect and trust with Assistant Police Chief Andrew Binder. I really think that I support the council's efforts to broaden and deepen accountability with the IPA. I think that since we've heard the verdict in the Derek Chauvin trial, there have already been far too many additional deaths of unarmed black adults and youths in the past weeks. And I think that we all need to begin to recognize the systemic roots of white supremacy and racism and continue to root them out as we've started to do and we must continue to do. I think we can do better and it's not just an issue that exists elsewhere. It's something that we also have a lot of work to do here in Palo Alto. And I guess I would just wrap up by saying that I would, I think it's very important to continue to listen to our youth. As a youthful, single mom with a tween and a teen, I see how differently our youth see the world and what priorities they hold dear. And I would be remiss, well, thank you for your time, but also be remiss not to mention that I am so pleased and comforted to see the caliber of the other applicants who've applied to become commissioners for the HRC. And it brings me comfort knowing that whomever is chosen will collectively keep pushing these important issues and work forward. So thank you again for your time.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you being here. All right, and I think we move on to our next one, Adriana Eberle, I'm going to pronounce everybody's last name incorrectly. And just to remind council colleagues, we we do have four applicants for three openings. Pastor Columbus Smith was wasn't able to interview, but he is reapplying.
Yes, our next applicant is Adriana Eberle. Adriana, I will promote you. You will need to turn on your video and unmute yourself and then we will begin your ten minute interview.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
We can. And hi, I hope you heard how this works. There's ten minutes. We'll give you a minute or so to introduce yourself and then we'll start asking questions.
Thank you. Good afternoon or good evening, council members. Thank you for having me here. My name is Adriana Everly. And I've I've lived in Palo Alto for over a decade. I moved here from Northern Virginia with my family. But I'm originally from Brazil and I immigrated to the US when I was fourteen. I have two children that have gone through the district here in Palo Alto. One is a sixth grader at JLS and one is a ninth grader at Pally. I have been a renter and I'm now a homeowner here in Palo Alto. I am a lawyer. I used to be a prosecutor for almost a decade and now I'm a defense attorney. I'm on the San Mateo Private Defender Panel, which is their equivalent of a public defender's office. Which means that I do indigent defense. So I have significant experience working with people from underrepresented groups. And I'm looking forward to using some of my tools to serve the city and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Cormac.
Hello, Ms. Everly. Thanks for applying. My question has to do with how you do your work and what I'm looking for is two words that other people who have worked with you would use to describe you and how you do your work.
I think the words are empathy and a champion. So I'm empathetic to my clients. I fight for them. But I think one of the things about being a champion is taking all the circumstances and figuring out what's the best solution for them and also knowing that I need to work with various stakeholders to get to the best solution for my client.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Adriana. Thanks for applying. I'm I'm curious for maybe if you can kind of express how your how your legal background and working with indigent clients is going to provide you with that with a nice set of background and experience to be able to represent similar indigent communities within within Palo Alto.
So as I said before, I was a prosecutor and now I'm a defense attorney. So I've been on both sides of the law. I have experienced working people with people from all walks of life, and I'm talking about people that have been systemically discriminated against. And when I say that, I mean, not just my clients or defendants, but also victims of crime. I've I've worked with people whose first language is not English. I work with people of different races, genders. I think that the fact that I have this kind of experience and it's not just, how can I say, I for my job, I need to be able to relate to them and take in what they say and then act on their behalf. I need to earn their trust. So in that sense, I think it's going to be really beneficial to the commission because I have a lot of experience in talking to people, listening to them, making them feel like they're heard and then acting on their behalf. So I feel like a lot of those skills I can translate to the commission. And also, like I mentioned before, working with different stakeholders. And what I mean by that, you know, I work with different organizations, with probation officers, judges, police officers, district attorneys. I know what it's like to have to listen to everybody and, you know, make a deep and analytical decision as to what to do based on everybody's views of something.
Vice Mayor Bert.
Thank you. So with your dual background as a prosecutor and a a defense attorney, I saw that you you wrote about having been a witness to systemic racism in the criminal justice system and from police and probation officers and prosecutors and judges. Can you share a little bit more in a brief time about kind of that either perspective that you've developed and how and how that experience might apply to the role of the HRC and the the authority that the HRC has? Or conversely, the limits of that authority?
Well, let me tell you just one example. I had a trial in the fall where my client was the victim of hit and run and then he ended up being charged with a crime. I can tell you that he was black. And then most likely that would not have happened to somebody who was white, didn't look like him and wasn't driving the kind of car that he he was driving. I can tell you that most of the stops that happen, they happen because of the car that people are driving, not so much for how they're driving. I I've witnessed this kind of systemic racism throughout my career and I think what will help me with in the commission is to be able to leverage that experience and, you know, telling community members that have been discriminated against, that I understand, you know, I've seen it in my work, what they've gone through. So I I would hope that it would give some credibility that, you know, I've been fighting for people and I've also protected people in the past. And I would hope that that experience would help them trust me. And that no matter what happens in the commission, that they feel like the commission did listen to them. You know, and that the council listened to them because they know that we took their complaints seriously and did what we could to help them, you know. I understand that we're not going to that not everybody's going to be happy, but I think that we need to listen to all the stakeholders and then make very balanced and analytical decisions and be able to explain to those stakeholders why we made those decisions. I hope that answers.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Koo.
Good evening, Ms. Everly, and thank you for applying. In your application, I see that you you asked a question, what kind of city do we envision Palo Alto to be twenty to thirty years from now? Love to hear what your vision is. And then also you mentioned that we should bring cutting edge and innovative strategies to the city council. Love to hear some of those as well.
Well, I would have, I don't know what kind of strategies at this point. I would love to talk to people that know more about strategies than I do. But I can tell you that there are two things that brought me to applying in the last two years. Well, one is the, you know, finally fighting police brutality. Second is the pandemic. It's been really disheartening to me to see the Nextdoor and Facebook posts about, you know, in this community that I thought was pretty, you know, I know, nice and respectful community and it's been, it feels like it's just not that kind of community lately. And then the fact that the division over Prop sixteen, which did not pass, the rise in hate crimes, especially against Asians lately. So all of those things are what brought me to apply for this position. And what I envision is a community that's not so divided, that we come to help together to help each other and that we understand, you know, we don't just hate other people because they don't agree with us. We take, you know, we understand each other and maybe can come to agreement or at least be more civil with each other. That's what I'm hopeful for.
Thank you.
So just have just over a minute left. I just wanted to ask you quickly, and then if you also want to just wrap up, but outside of kind of these recent events with police and racism, you know, do you have experience or interest in things like senior issues or veteran issues, which are you know, other things that the Human Resources Commission spends time on?
Well, I mean, I know it's interesting, but I have. And again, believe it or not, I work with a lot of seniors and I work with veterans too. We have a veterans court. So through my work, I've been, again, working with all of those groups. So I've, you know, I've had clients where I've helped who were, you know, might have been charged with crime, but also might have been victims of elder abuse. So I do have that experience that I bring to the table. And I do feel that somebody needs to speak up for them and it's really what I've witnessed in my work is really saddening and concerning. I mean, there are so many seniors who are victims of crimes. And it's hard because they need a lot more help to guide them. Okay, so I'll wrap up.
Yeah, sorry. Control of my phone.
Sorry. I, you know, I have a diverse background. I've lived here for over a decade. I know what it's like, it's like to take ESL in school. I know what it's like to live in Palo Alto and raise children here. I think I have a lot to bring to the board. I and I hope that my experience, my diversity and I'm hoping to bring a balanced and analytical approach to the issues. And I also, so I'm so thankful that Palo Alto has a Human Relations Commission. I don't think I've ever had one before in any of the other places where I've lived. So
Thank you.
Thank you so much and thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you. Ten minutes goes fast, so I appreciate you applying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to, I guess our our last HRC candidate.
Yes, Michelle Kraus is our next applicant. Michelle, I will promote you as a panelist and you will turn on your video as well as unmute yourself and then the ten minute interview will begin.
So hello, Michelle. I think you may have done this before. You have ten minutes. And if you want to spend a minute or two introducing yourself, then we'll ask you questions. And your camera is off. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my camera is off. Hold on, let me talk to it for a second. Here it is. Hi. I'm in. Hi, everybody, and thank you for this opportunity. I've lived in town almost thirty years. It's hard to believe. I left Carnegie Mellon and was fortunate enough to get recruited to come out here and ultimately to be a CEO of private companies and also the opportunity to run a public company. I have been involved in fighting for social change all of my adult life. As I say in my application, I grew up outside New York City in a racially, ethnically and religiously diverse community. I was one of a minority. I grew up in a Scottish Irish working class town. And my family often remarked of, where is Michelle? And I was usually walking up and down the street canvassing and chatting with people probably from the age of ten forward. They wouldn't let me out of the house before that. And I can tell you, when I brought my mother out here to visit, when I ran this public company in Emeryville, she kind of grabbed my hand with the Emeryville Public Market. And she looked at me and said in Yiddish, I know why you're here, my daughter. You don't see black and white. You see all the colors of the rainbow. As she walked around and looked at the diversity, which is California. I've worked for women's issues. I've done work with the Women's Media Center. I've done innovative animations, messaging. I've worked for now. I worked, it goes on. And I was invited to the Clinton Global Initiative to cover from the floor a rapid response to the presentations about global issues, whether they be race, whether it be hunger, whether it be climate. I became a front page writer for all of those issues on the Huffington Post. So I feel very fortunate to be here and at this point in my career, I'm a crisis manager. If there's a problem, they call Michelle. If I have to do a turnaround, they call Michelle. That's just what my life has become. And I welcome the opportunity to serve because there's so much to be done. I can tell you from the FBI and CIA reports that the rise of violence against Jews, against blacks, against Asians is off the chart. It's grown over a hundred percent. Anti-Semitism is on the rise. That's near and dear to me because of what I am. But we've seen what's happened in the last period of time and we must do better. I consider that Palo Alto should be the jewel of Silicon Valley and we have to do better too. So the question remains for me to the council, can can we involve more advocacy? Can we do some rapid response? So then when these atrocities happen around the country or even our backyard, we're able to say to people, we're here. If you have to do talking, we're here. We'll hold small community meetings. We're here. We hear you. And that's how I'd like to be able to be active. And if you just need me to write text, I'm very competent, as Greer knows. Yeah. Anyway, ask me questions, please.
Councilmember Phil Seth, your hand was up. Do you have a question?
Yeah. Thanks for applying, Michelle. So why now?
Why now?
Yeah.
It's now because the rates of adversity are tearing the communities apart. The fabric of our America is being torn asunder. If we can't do better here, where can we do better? That's why now. And also, I'm a little less busy right now. We've just gone through a four year cycle. I do a lot of political fundraising, as many of the panel of the council people know. And I have time.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Michelle. Good, good seeing you. Thank you for applying. And yes, I have definitely read a lot of your writings. You are, you are a great writer. And yes, I have definitely read a lot of your writings. You are, you are a great writer. I'm curious, what do you think is the, is the kind of most, if you were to come up with like a must-to-do list for the HRC for the next year? What would be your top one, two, or three items that the HRC really needs to address?
I don't know the sources of funding. But if we need to be more aggressive in our outreach to be able to fund programs, I would think that would be the top of the list. Because now it's more important than it's ever been. Secondly, in terms of topics, I think affordable housing is critical. I'm a long-term renter. I've rented for almost 28 years. When I got here, it's when I should have bought, but I was a poor graduate student. And my student loans got paid off first. Affordable housing gives people equal funding, equal platforms for standing in this community. And next, all the racial and Asian-related issues. We've got to deal with systemic racism. We've got to deal with policing. We have to turn our eyes there and be aware. I think that the last candidate's remarks about her clientele were very appropriate. We have a lot of people here on the other side of the aisle that haven't been as fortunate as I've been.
Thank you.
You won.
Let's remember Cormac.
Hello, Ms. Kraus. Thanks for joining us. My question is really about how you do your work. So what are two words that people who have worked with you would use to describe you and how you do your work? So colleagues, how would people describe your work?
The ever-ready bunny.
Okay.
Put the batteries in and the show goes off. That's probably the best descriptor. I have an incredible hunger to get things done and it hasn't changed in decades.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have about a minute left. And if you want to summarize.
I'm a lifelong advocate of working for change. I can tell you, when my colleague Mark Hornberg and I started working with John Kerry in 2004, I raised my hand and said, take me for all of the different franchise groups around the table. And I worked in 2004 till 2006 with then Congressman Mykanda to get the APIA a seat at the table. Mike became the first chair because of those efforts. And it now has a life of its own. We also did hard work on the South Asian community. And now it is a living, breathing entity. There's things that we can accomplish. It just takes hard work and a lot of patience because things don't change overnight. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Michelle. Thanks, thanks for applying.
Thank you. Our next applicant or our next set of interviews will be for the Public Art Commission. The first to be interviewed for this is Shiraz Baba. Shiraz, I'll promote you as panelist. If you can turn on your video and unmute yourself, we will begin your 10-minute interview.
And again, we have three openings for our commission.
Right. Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you for this opportunity to interview for the Public Arts Commission. My name is Shiraz Baba, and I've been living in Palo Alto for the past 13 years and on and off since 1995. I live in my town Palo Alto and have two kids attending PAUSD. I'm a painter and artist by training and vocation. I've worked as a graphic artist and a user experience designer for multiple Silicon Valley companies and also been a freelance photographer. I'm currently a Spectra art teacher at BAUSD, although that has been on pause because of the pandemic. In the recent years, I've become involved in the Palo Alto Public Art Community from being one of the muralists at the Black Lives Matter mural and lately as a selection panelist on the Art Lift and Microgrants. I have become more interested in serving my community and I'm keen to explore more aspects of art beyond my own. Being on the Public Art Commission is a way to do that. I would like to bring my unique perspective to the existing commission. I would love to see public art as a centerpiece in our community, where the city provides a backdrop to all the changing artwork and projects. I would advocate and involve people of all ages, from youth to seniors. I want to increase engagement through outreach in schools, senior communities, local social media groups, art organizations, city departments and the like. I think the commission's excellent work in involving local businesses and community organizations has been very effective and should be continued. I have a particular interest in the initiative of the Art Commission and the Human Relations Commission to create a permanent platform for temporary art that focuses on promoting diversity and racial justice. Having this platform can create opportunities to raise and promote awareness on various issues we face today as a society. Being an immigrant American myself, and given all the recent events, I've been thinking about this initiative a lot lately. I'm excited to see the commission taking this action on this already and would love to contribute to it. And I believe execution is very important. It's important to make forward progress and get things done. Done is better than perfect. I'm excited to work with the council to get things done. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could ask you, which, which letter of the mural did you do and what did you think of the controversy?
I did the T.
Okay.
And the matter is, yeah, the yellow, bright yellow T, if you remember.
And what did you think about the controversy over?
You know, I, I think it's okay. Like, like I just said, you know, done is better than perfect. And I'm so glad that the Arts Commission went ahead and did this. I know it was a really quick turnaround from when it got approval to actually getting it done. So I think it was fantastic. And I know there was controversy. But I think I'm glad it happened.
Yeah, I'm just saying, and it was also temporary. How did you feel when it was removed, I guess?
Which, which I agree. I guess if it was a permanent, if it was a permanent piece of art, maybe it would be a little more questionable. But I'm really all for doing a lot of temporary art, just using the city as a gallery and just showing a lot of beautiful art.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Ms. Baba, hello. Thanks for applying and thanks for participating in the mural last year. And my question is about how you do your work. So I'm looking for two words that other people who've worked with you would use to describe you and your work style. There are two words that people who've worked with you would use when they're talking about you.
So the first word I think that comes to mind for me is kind of affable. I guess I work great with people of all ages. I feel like I can communicate well with people older than me, people younger than me. Again, you know, like I said, I've taught in the classroom. I've been doing Spectra. I feel like I can connect with the kids. So I would say that would be one word. And I think another word is just positive and getting things done. I think I'd just like to have a positive attitude about things, even when things aren't that great. I'm just like, find that one bright thing and kind of hold on to that. So I think affable and positive are probably two words.
Yeah. So my mother always called a silver lining. Yeah.
That's right.
Thank you.
Pretty much.
Councilmember Chu.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baba, for applying. And good evening. So I was going to ask the same question that Mayor DeBois asked, but since he asked that, I wanted to ask, in your application, it says that, you know, having public art also creates important conversations and builds a stronger community, since there's so many polarizing opinions at this point. Did you feel that the BM, BM mural silenced one sector of voices and stopped the conversation there?
I don't think it did. I, I think there definitely was a lot of conversation. I, what, you, you mean like silence which part? Is there like a specific part or?
Well, you know, I mean, obviously there's the controversy with that one letter that actually the police actually felt a little bit uncomfortable with. And I think that, you know, there is a conversation there that could have been brought out, but they weren't given the opportunity, you know, so.
Yeah. So I think interestingly within the community, I don't think people really talked about that. You know, I felt like a lot of people just went out and saw the art. It was amazing. Like so many people reached out to me saying, oh, we saw your name there and we saw that you painted it. And I, I definitely think it brought community together. Honestly, I don't think there was that much conversation around that piece, which I think there should have been, honestly. I feel like there was definitely something in the media, but not that much in the community.
Thank you for that. And I, I really think that was a missed opportunity too, you know. I think it's a two-way street, you know, in, in these kind of conversations. And so definitely a missed opportunity. Thank you very much.
Was, thank you.
I smell it.
Yeah. Could you speak a little bit more about any thoughts you have on the temporary art and and youth voices and opportunities for youth to really participate in that, in particular, given that we have expanded essentially the public space with our partial or whole street closures and, and any opportunities that you might foresee there?
I think there are so many, right? Like I think our high schools, for example. I know at least the Black Lives Matter. I know Harker applied and they had one of the letters. With the Art Lift micro grant, I know that GAN did a couple of projects, I believe. I don't think I saw anything from Bally. So I think it's just getting the word out into a school community. It's like I said, whether it's social media, whether it's, you know, TikTok or Snapchat or something, and just engaging our younger community members would be amazing. I think even elementary school kids, I think even middle school, I think just by even communicating with the school district, I think we could definitely get more kids involved and definitely do a lot more around town. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Greg, Councilmember Tucker.
Thank you for coming to interview with us and thank you for your work on that, on that letter. It was quite beautiful. As you know, this heat's going through pretty tough financial times. We had a tough time last year. We're going through tough times this year. What's your thoughts in terms of, does, does good art have to be expensive? Or, you know, right, for instance, right now, we have this kind of fixed allocation of money dedicated to art. Do we have to have that? Or can we, can good art be found, you know, at any price, you know, or does it have to be, or do we have to, or does have, there's a, does there have to be a certain dollar amount that has to be spent to make, in order for us to have good art that the community can appreciate?
I definitely don't think so. I think, you know, there, there are enough people who would do it without getting paid for it, for one. And I definitely don't think good art needs to cost a lot of money. I also think right in our neighborhood, neighboring communities like in East Palo Alto, even in Palo Alto, we have so many financial corporations who could definitely, you know, augment some of the expenses with the city and kind of contribute to that if we feel like budget is an issue. But no, I, I don't believe that good art needs to cost a lot of money.
So these, these interviews go by very fast. There's about 40 seconds if you want to wrap up with anything.
All right, no worries. I'll just wrap up with my closing that I have and to say that I applaud the steps that you're taking with arts in Palo Alto and would love to join you in continuing the work and building more. Thank you for your consideration and time. And if I'm selected on the commission, I would love and I would be honored to serve on it. And if not, I'm happy to help in any capacity to bring more art to Palo Alto. Thanks and have a great evening, everyone, and thanks for this opportunity.
Yeah, thanks for applying.
Thank you. Our next applicant is incumbent Lauren Gordon. Lauren Gordon, I will promote you as panelist. If you could turn on your video and unmute yourself, we will begin your 10-minute interview.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, I don't know if you watched previously, there's 10 minutes for the interview. Give you about a minute or so to introduce yourself and then we'll just start asking questions.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Lauren Gordon. First of all, I would like to thank you, Mayor DeBois, Vice Mayor Bert, Councilmembers Cormac, Phil Seth, Ku, Stone, and Tanaka, for this opportunity to interview for a third term on the Public Art Commission. I am delighted to serve Palo Alto, the city I've lived in since year 2000. And I also wish to thank you again for your decision to maintain our percent for art program. Art is fundamental. I believe it is not an extra. And we have seen this through the pandemic. We noticed how everyday people and artists alike need to express themselves to combat loneliness and depression. Art nurtures the spirit and calms the mind. And our Palo Alto Art Program removes barriers. Public art is for everyone. I'm proud of the projects that the Public Art Staff and Commission have promoted during this pandemic. We support artists primarily local artists, the City Council, and the citizens of Palo Alto. The Art Lift micro grant program, Temporary Murals program, and the Susan O'Malley's Community Advice Project have all been examples of this. I'm sure I've passed my one-minute time limit and I look forward to discussing art with you now.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Chu.
Thank you. And Ms. Gordon, thank you for reapplying and for all the years of service. I wanted to ask, so next month is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Has any, has anything been prepared in order to celebrate that month?
Right now, we are working closely with the Human Relations Commission. And we are working on actually a project for King Plaza. And it is not specifically just for the Asian Pride Month, but it is also for all people of color. And we're working on a permanent installation there. But I appreciate you bringing this to my attention. And we will discuss this at the next meeting. So thank you.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you very much for, for your service and reapplying. So what should we do next? Or should what should the Art Commission do next that we're not already doing?
What should we do next? Well, we've got some exciting things going on right now. We've got that major piece of permanent platform that we're working on for King Plaza, which is kind of taking precedence. We've got a lot of artists working on the micro grants. And what I've really liked about the Art Lift micro grant program is that you've seen a lot of different things throughout Palo Alto. And I think that's been really helpful and that's been new for us. What else should we do now that we're getting outside more and we're able to gather a little bit more? I think we should also do events, not right away, but we should proceed with starting to plan some of our Code Art II that could come up this fall, depending what the CDC guidelines are, and get people together safely. So people can start enjoying being in the community that we are.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Lauren. Thank you for your service and, and your, and applying for another term. I'm curious, what do you, what do you view as your, kind of your greatest accomplishment so far on the commission? And what do you hope to still be able to achieve in a third term?
Okay, thank you. I've done a lot with the Palo Alto Public Art. And I guess some of the greatest things that come to mind, of course, was being there as the artists were painting the Black Lives Matter mural. It was great to interact with the public and the artists. And it just really brought our city together. And it was a, it was a great time. I also think another project that I'm proud of was Code Art I, because it kind of became a destination for people. And it was over a couple of different days. We were able to get private funding for that. And we were able to look forward to using our interactions with the public to plan for Code Art II. So those are some things that I'm proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other, yes, Vice Mayor Bert.
Yes. So I, I want to do, in a way, follow up on Councilmember Ku's question where our public art, I think, has our public art, I think, has not traditionally really reflected the, the history and, and particularly the, the multi-ethnic and gender history of our community and use that as a way to both honor and informed, and inform and be more inclusive. And so I wanted to hear if, if the commission has really had discussions about that. And I was kind of taken back that, that the, the permanent art piece on MLK Plaza, which I'm really looking forward to, doesn't seem to in any way have, if I understood your responses correctly, have had any acknowledgement of, of our Asian community.
Um, I think, thank you for bringing this to my attention. We are working with the HRC on those 100 conversations. And we are going to be involved in that, really reaching out to the community and trying to bring all people to, to give input on what's going to come onto the plaza. And I believe that all voices will be heard and we're, our plan is to hire an artist in residence. So that artist can not only get data from all those 100 conversations, but also be working with the community and bring in multiple voices. So I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. We know, we live in a very diverse city and we want our artwork to reflect that. So we have hired a consultant who just worked with us to bring more artists to reach, figure out ways to reach out to more diverse artists. We've got a new open call. So I think this is top of mind. So, thank you.
And just related to that, one of the things that we hear from youth is the need to have models that represent their backgrounds.
Right.
And, and so I would just encourage looking at some of the past leaders that we've had that have been under-acknowledged in our community, that can be models for the youth today.
So there's.
So thank you.
Yeah, there's about two minutes left. One of the things that council has done is we've updated our boards and commissions rules. So we've created a handbook. And one of the things in there is term limits. And having served several terms, I wondered what your view of term limits is? How you see the pros and cons?
Thank you. I think there are definitely pros to having term limits. I am applying because I can serve a third term and I would love to because I've been working on a couple of projects that I'd like to see through. But I certainly understand that a term limit is a good thing and getting new voices in is welcome. So I appreciate that.
Great, thanks. So there, there is about a minute left if you want to do a wrap up.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Why should you consider me for a third term? I am deeply involved in this art program. And as I said, I'm currently working with the HRC on bringing a permanent platform for art focused on race, equity and inclusion on King Plaza at City Hall. I was on the commission when both the master plan and the Cal Art Plan were crafted. And I've been involved with many of the hands-on projects, like the weaving willows for the Patrick Doherty sculpture and placing twigs in the Forging Island product, project. I'm just very proud of the work and I'm very proud to be working with Elise, Nadia and Denise to bring inspiring art to everyone in Palo Alto. And so I'd like to continue that and I guess I'll just keep moving, keep playing and keep dreaming of great art for the public in Palo Alto as Susan O'Malley's poster says. So thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you for applying.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Mate Huberman. Mate, I will promote you as a panelist. If you can turn on your video and unmute yourself, we'll begin your 10-minute interview.
Hello, can you see me?
Yes, hi, welcome. So there's 10 minutes. We'll go ahead and let you start with an introduction and then we'll ask you some questions.
Okay, great. Hello, everyone on the City Council. My name is Meta Huberman and I'm originally from Denmark, but I have lived in Palo Alto for the last 30 years and have been involved in the community in various ways, including getting a master's degree at Stanford. And I care deeply about public art and believe that public art improves a local community and reflects the people and values of the community. I also believe that public art can bring together a diverse community around common goals of beautification, sustainability, as well as diversity, in particular after a pandemic. I'm an art history scholar and have taken numerous courses in art history and art production. And I have worked for more than 20 years as a senior research analyst at a nonprofit company, directing projects to evaluate educational programs, including school arts education programs in the local area of Palo Alto and other local cities. I have expertise in all aspects of an evaluation project from managing people and budgets to interviewing and surveying stakeholders, analyzing data and summarizing and presenting results. And I believe that these skills, as well as my deep knowledge of art history and art, will be very useful as a member of the Public Art Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Ms. Huberman, thanks so much for applying. Good evening. My question is more about how you do your work. So I'm looking for two words that people who have worked with you would use to describe you and your work style.
Um, I think people would say that I am very conscientious. I, I get things done. I'm very organized and I'm also very empathic. I'm very good at working with a diverse group of people of all ages, races and backgrounds. So I think those two words, I think people would, would probably agree with conscientious and empathic.
Thank you. And I bet you're missing the chorus right now.
I am actually really missing the chorus, but believe it or not, I was back in Denmark in the fall and managed to join a small chorus and was singing in Denmark in the fall.
I'm jealous.
I was going to touch on that. So you have this art background, also music and, you know, how do you see the interplay of music and art? And could that, you know, be evident in our public art program?
Oh, that's a really interesting question. How can music be integrated? Well, I mean, I think that, back to the chorus, my experience as a, as a chorus member for more than 20 years at the Stanford Symphony Chorus, I could imagine doing some pop-up chorus art activities in and around Palo Alto. I think that would be really interesting. Getting different groups of people in, involved in these kinds of projects from local schoolchildren to adults who sing in various choruses. I think that could actually be a really interesting way of engaging people in a different way than just doing visual arts, but also doing music as part of the art program.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Stone.
I'm a, I'm a history teacher. I think, I think art history is fascinating and I'm really interested in your background. I think that can bring a very, a very fascinating perspective to the commission. Maybe can you, can you talk about how you see yourself being able to use that, that background and experience and passion on, on, on the Public Art Commission?
Yes, that's a good question. So I'm actually, um, two-thirds done with a master's program in, in art history at the Academy of Art University in San Francisco. And I've just taken a really broad set of, of courses so far, which just gives me a very broad knowledge base about art history. But I think it can be put to good use, just understanding sort of artist backgrounds and their approaches. One thing I have really focused on in my study so far is women's contributions to art history. And that's something that I really care a lot about. So appreciating female artists' contributions. And, and not just art historically, but also in our, in contemporary art. And really would like to see females being being promoted and and also represented as much as, as male art is. And we know historically, male art has been much more promoted than female art has. So I just would like to make sure that there is an even distribution in our public art as well.
Thank you. Yeah, great goal.
You have some artistic lighting there, Councilmember Stone.
I know, I just noticed that. I feel very evil right now with this. It's very artistic.
Councilmember Cormac.
Because I, is it all right to ask a second question?
Sure.
Yes, thank you. I was interested in your comment about digitizing art experiences. Is there anything you can share with us about how that might look? I feel like sometimes we have these neat art pieces and then they're gone and it's like they never happened. So.
Yeah. So I was actually very impressed with some of the online experiences that are currently on the website. And I think specifically the Temporary Murals Project and also the Air Lift Micro Grant Program has some really interesting ways of engaging the public in these online art experiences. And that's what I meant when I, when I made that comment. That it would be nice to be able to do that across the board, because it's also a way of not just exposing the public to these art experiences, but also promoting the artists again. So being able to learn more about the artists who have created the art in, in these online experiences.
Yeah, I agree with you. That was great. I suggested actually to the Historic Resources Board about a way to identify locations. Thank you.
Yeah.
And have you had a chance to look at the, the Art Master Plan?
I have, I mean, I have, I think as I put in my application, I have skimmed it and was very impressed with the comprehensiveness of that plan. Having done research and written reports for 20, more than 20 years, it's, it's a very impressive plan. And as I said, I, I look forward to, if chosen as a member of the commission, being able to put it into practice and, and get to know it better.
Great. So we have about a minute or so left. Would you like to go ahead and, and kind of wrap up?
Sure. So my closing statement is really about some of the things that you have already asked, but I just want to reiterate that I, as I mentioned earlier, care deeply about female artist recognition and appreciation, which would be one of my goals if I were to be elected as a commission member. And I think that my, I believe that my art historical knowledge on the topic and my experience working with stakeholders and artists as part of my evaluation work will be very helpful in this process. And then we talked already about the online art experiences, but that was sort of my second point about working on that, because I really appreciate these online experiences that are already available and just making that available across the board, I think would be really helpful for the public at large. And then lastly, I just want to say that I look forward to working with my fellow Public Art Commission members if I'm elected. And also, as we just talked about, around the City of Palo Alto Public Art Master Plan and, and really getting to know that better and putting that to good use. So thank you very much for considering me.
Yes, great. Thank you very much for applying.
Thanks.
Thank you. And Mayor DuBois, we just had word, or we just received an email of Ian Klaus withdrawing his reapplication, so he will not be attending and interviewing tonight.
Okay. And then I take it Emily Meyer's not here yet?
And Emily Meyer is here. So Emily, if you are available, I will promote you as panelist and if you could turn on your video and audio, we will be able to start that 10-minute interview.
And just to be clear, Ian withdrew. It's not just, he's not interviewing.
I don't believe, let me just double check on that application or that email. I did try to contact him and he has not replied. He did send the email just now on withdrawing his reapplication.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I'm confirming that he's withdrawing his application. So Ms. Emily Meyer, if you could turn on your video and audio, we'll begin your 10-minute interview.
Hi.
Hi, there you are. Yes, thank you for being here early. If, if you want to go ahead and just introduce yourself and then we'll start asking questions.
Yeah. I'm Emily Meyer. I have lived in Palo Alto over the course of 20 years, for the past, for about 15 years. I'm here tonight because I'm very interested in serving the community in inspiring ways. As a designer, I'm committed to people finding connection and curiosity through art and design. As an entrepreneur and executive, I have experience leading and managing creative teams on highly collaborative efforts for strategic goals. Currently as a volunteer, I work to build relationships with empathy and to fortify trust. When I do lead, it's with vision, vision that is original and authentic and always balanced with humanity, humility and compassion.
Great, thank you. Turn to council, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Meyer. Thanks for joining us and for applying.
Sure, thank you.
And you've just already touched on it, but I'd just like to follow up. My question is about how you do your work. So what are two words that people who have worked with you would use to describe you and your work style? And it can be in any of your various, you know, personal, professional, volunteer organizations.
I think the first one would be adaptable. Some, I always have my eye on the North Star. But if, for any reason in working on the project or the goal, working towards the goal and we need to explore different avenues or take a little detour to get there, I'm usually the first one to lead or propose the many different ways that could happen. And then the people who have worked with me for a long times will know that I, I'm at my best with those authentic connections, with those one-on-one conversations. I can, I can engage a room. But I feel like the best learning comes on those more intimate conversations and connections.
Yeah, so Zoom interviews are pretty terrible then. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Let's remember Phil Seth.
Hi, hey, thank you very much for, for applying and volunteering here.
Sure, thank you.
What, 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 what's a piece of art around town that you particularly like? And are there any examples that, you know, you think, well, maybe that's a good candidate for replacement?
Like I described myself, I'm more of a visionary leader. And what I do like in kind of assessing all of the work around town is kind of the themes that I see happening. And so, as I alluded to in my application, the environmental issues, when there's a variety of nature-made sculptures to outdoor wayfinding to the scale and location of the Black Lives Matter. I feel like that brings, or the blue trees, that all brings I feel like that brings, or the blue trees, that all brings a heightened awareness to the way environment is used in expressing these messages or this, these values. Yeah, that's my answer.
So, so something with, things with meaning.
Yes, always. That's part of me is being a designer. I think that's the difference between art and design is that design, um, has a market basically, has a, a goal, it has to collaborate, whereas art is the unique expression, which is always beautiful and can totally strike, um, heartstrings and evoke emotions. There's something so powerful and unique about public art in that it can spark, um, connection, it can, um, pull people in, it can, it can speak a message that's almost bigger than itself. And so it's a two, it's kind of a two-way dynamic in that the artist takes responsibility for that while they're creating it.
Councilmember Stone.
Mr. Mayor, hi Emily, thanks for, for applying and I, I really love your, your passion and, uh, and just some of the context you're explaining art, uh, and it's, I never thought of it in that way and I, and I really appreciate that. And I, and I really, I really enjoyed it within your application, your, your kind of connection to social justice issues. And I'm curious how you think arts and, and especially public art can help further some of our social justice goals within the community.
Immediately I think of engagement, engaging the community. I loved learning in the, um, Master Art Plan, the little bicycle engagement, mobile engagement, um, centers. How awesome would it be to still get those out? I have young children in elementary and middle school and, um, it, it's, it seems like the most natural way is to engage families and young children to kind of um, almost start that conversation or start that awareness as they grow up through, in our community and they just become, they know their community is a place that, um, appreciates the diversity and the, um, eclecticness that Palo Alto is.
Are, are, are you still, um, are you still running your company and?
I'm not, I retired in 2018.
Okay, so you got a lot going on there.
No, I, I volunteer a lot now. I'm leading a project at Addison Elementary, quite an extensive, um, mural project. And, um, it was, uh, which all started before COVID. And, um, and it was through the development of this that, um, and the, the building of the new campus and the refurbishment of some old buildings that I was like, oh my gosh, there's this stunning blank wall. Wouldn't it be powerful if we could use that in, um, a collaborative way to express the values of Addison?
So can you tell, like, how, how is that project going and what, what did you do?
It's great. Um, it took quite a hiatus last spring and last summer and I'm, I'm on the site council there at school on campus, part of the campus, which means, um, we are parent and staff co-led. We make approvals for the capital investments on campus. And, um, because of my does design background, I was happy to, um, bring life and vitality to the, um, building, which has, um, kind of a very has sterile walls right now. And so.
Did you guys find professional artists? Like who's going to make the mural?
Um, there was already some intake, um, from the school of that with the theme they wanted. And I ended up reaching out to a designer that I've worked with before because he could take my, we had worked together. So he could take my direction and execute, um, a very modern take on the neighborhood, which is trees and rays of light and little animals that you would find in our neighborhood. And so that is going up on a forty-eight long wall, forty-eight foot wall, um, a twenty-foot, twenty-six foot tall ceiling, um, wall in the library and all of that will be done in June.
That was very cool.
It's exciting.
So there's about one minute left, uh, if you want to give us a, a wrap up.
Right. Thank you so much for having me. I am so honored to go through this process and to meet all of you. For all that I am, I will generate positivity and possibility and opportunity for the artistic expression of Palo Alto. I believe that art and design are powerful tools for messaging values and even demonstrating norms of belonging. That's what's so beautiful and neutralizing about art. I would be a committed and dedicated member of the Public Art Commission, authentically engaging with all of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for, for applying.
Sure.
Thank you. And, um, Mayor DuBois, Ian Klaus is in the attendees and he is wishing to just share a couple of thoughts on the interview. Would you like to move forward with that?
Sure.
Okay, uh, Ian Klaus, I'm gonna unmute yourself and if you are able to just relay your, your comments.
Sure, I'll be very brief. Um, and Mayor DuBois, I see that you're in person, which is a fabulous development. Um, and I thank you all for, uh, allowing me to, to just offer some quick observations. Um, uh, in part, I just wanted to check in person because I withdrew my application a couple of minutes ago and opted so at a very late, um, hour and felt it would be rude not to show up. Um, it'd also be rude to take up more of your time, but I wanted to very quickly share with you my reasoning. I think this will take less than, than two minutes. Um, it is a privilege to serve on Palo Alto's Public Art Commission. The PAC's commitment to using public art and public space to advance equity is a noble one. And there remains much work to be done, including in the Public Art and Private Development Program. Alignment of public art with city priorities in support of local businesses, residents and commuters during the COVID nineteen pandemic illustrates the potential for bringing policy and culture together. An alignment that remains important as the city recovers. In July twenty twenty, the City Council voted to reduce the number of members on the PAC. Along with the commissioners, I voiced concerns that this might limit the perspectives and backgrounds represented on the As I believe was the council's hope, the reduced number of commissioners has allowed for increased debate and dialogue, while also making the PAC more efficient and convenient. As such, I was excited to reapply for appointment, to apply for reappointment. The importance of diverse voices remains, however, and the applicant pool this cycle is incredibly diverse, accomplished and impressive. Testament to the public art program and its staff and the city itself. Recognizing the merits of the reduced PAC, but also the opportunity to add new and expert voices beyond my own, I struggled with the decision but decided I had no opportunity to withdraw my application. I'm eager to continue the work committed to for the remainder of my appointment and know that with the expert staff, experienced commissioners, exciting new voices and the mayor's involvement in the commission, the city's public arts program will thrive. Thanks for allowing me the time to deliver this message in person.
Yeah, thanks for joining us and thanks for your service on the commission.
Thank you. Our next applicant is incumbent Ben Miyagi. Mr. Ben Miyagi, I will promote you as panelist. If you can turn on your video and unmute yourself, you will begin the ten minute interview.
Good evening.
Hi, cool. Thanks for joining us. Um, if you want to go ahead and just give a little bit of an introduction, we'll start asking questions.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for your support of the Public Art Program and for this opportunity to speak to you tonight about the Public Art Program. Public Art Master Plan was implemented a few years ago and is the commission's guide for public art for the next ten years and is versatile enough to accommodate current events. One such event is the Black Lives Matter mural in front of City Hall that was completed in June. Also, an offshoot of this Public Art Master Plan is the California Avenue Public Art Master Plan. Both these plans will help do our work plans for the each coming year. The past year has seen many projects come online, temporary public art on King Plaza, the murals around the public safety building construction site, the Micro Grants Pilot, Pilot Program, which is temporary public art projects around Palo Alto by community members and a total number of about forty will be implemented. In conjunction with Palo Alto's uplift initiative, eight temporary murals have been placed on and around California and university avenues. Murals will be installed around the public service building, parking garage construction site in the near future. In addition, two informative artist talks were held with the Black Lives Matter and the Uplift Initiative mural artists. I would be remiss if I didn't give the highest kudos to the public art staff, Elise, Nadia and Denise. It is because of their efforts, the, of the staff, Palo Alto's Public Art Program is nationally recognized. And at the direction of the City Council, the Public Art Commission will start a race and equity public art program in King Plaza. Many discussions have been held on this subject and a final project will be unveiled shortly. Also, a unique collaboration with the Human Rights Commission was formed to further investigate rest, race and equity in Palo Alto. Through this collaboration, public art can provide a meaningful message concerning race and equity for Palo Alto and beyond.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, Vice Mayor Phil Self, or sorry, Councilmember Phil Self.
I'll stick with advice, not the mayor part.
Battlefield promotion.
Yeah.
Hey, uh, Ben, thank you very much for, uh, for, for your service and for reapplying here. You know, in, in sort of the next term of this, as we come out of the pandemic, what, what do you think as, as the Art Commission, what do you think we ought to do more of and, and are there any things that we ought to throttle back on as, as we sort of emerge here?
Well, I, I think, um, temporary public art is, is really a way to get the community involved and also uplift the community and be very informative. And that is a trend nowadays in public art is more temporary public art, the temp, the permanent, uh, sculptures and things have kind of gone by the wayside. So that's what I look at to have more temporary public art to go up and around Palo Alto and I think it would help the, uh, community.
Thank you. Uh, did you have a follow-up? Uh, Councilmember Cook.
Mr. Miyagi, thank you for your service to the city in the Arts Commission for so many years, um, and for reapplying. Um, I wanted to ask, with, um, race and equity work that you had mentioned and of course the Beal, um, artwork and so forth, uh, with American, uh, Asian-American heritage, Pacific Islander Heritage Month coming up next month, why is it still just about the entire race and equity and, and since there's so, there has been violence and hate crimes against the Asian community, um, why has that been considered in your commission to, um, highlight some of the contributions Asians and Pacific Islanders have, uh, to this region and to Palo Alto?
Yes, we have discussed that extensively within our commission meetings about, um, Asian Pacific Islander hate crimes that are going on. And that will be one of the focuses that we'll be doing. And the thing with public temporary art is that you can highlight different things as you go along. And you can also react to things that are happening in society. You put up something that's permanent, that's up and there's nothing you can do about it. But if it's temporary, it can be up for a, a month or a few months and then you can play, put something up to replace that as well. So I, I, I think the, the versatility of temporary public art suits, uh, race and equity very well.
I, uh, well, I'm encouraged to hear that it will be highlighted and I hope that you will, the commission will be working with Stanford University's, um, History Department as well as Palo Alto History Museum in order to highlight more of the contributions of the, uh, Asian-American Pacific Islanders to the region, especially in their heritage months, next, next month.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Those pointers.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes, Mayor. Um, hi Ben, thank you for your service and for reapplying. I'm, I'm curious, what is your, what is, what accomplishment have you done on the, on the commission that you're most proud of and, and why?
Well, to pinpoint one would be the private development percent for public art, which I think is a huge step for Palo Alto to take. And there was several pieces that have gone up because of that. Um, one is a Barbara Gargudas piece, uh, which is a, uh, aluminum and light sculpture, which is beautiful. It's just a beautiful piece. So I, I think with that Palo Alto, uh, has been very forward-thinking, um, about that, uh, with the percent for, for, uh, private development. And as well, the race and equity piece, I think is another one that, um, I would highlight.
And I'm curious, quick little follow-up, do you think that percentage is, uh, is the right number? Should it be lower? Should it be higher? Or are you happy with where it's at?
Well, I, I always want it higher, always higher, but right now I'm happy with where it is. But at some point, if we can get it higher, that would be wonderful.
Great, thank you.
So I'll jump in. Um, I see you read our new board and commission handbook and you have extensive experience, not only in our commission, but other commissions. Wondered, uh, what you thought were kind of the pros and cons of setting term limits on our commissions.
I, I am of two minds of that. I agree with term limits because I think it gets more people involved. Um, but the other side of that too is that you have to have people apply. And in this cycle, I think you've had enough people, more than enough people apply. But in the past cycles, I know we haven't had as many people apply. So that's one thing about term limits. Um, the thing I don't like about term limits is once you learn what's going on, then you're out the door. And then you have to replace that experience, um, with somebody else and train that person again. So those are the two. I like term limits, but I don't like it because experienced people are out the door and you have to get somebody else to take their place.
Yeah, and we tried to strike that balance. Do you think, you know, the number of terms was a good, good way to do it?
I, I think two terms, yes, two, two terms is, uh, the first term is really learning, the second term you can really get going and doing things.
Okay, thank you. So there's just over a minute left. If you want to make a summation, that, that'd be great.
In these times of pandemic and social unrest, public art can be a powerful tool to help bring hope and a sense of well-being to the community as well as bridge the gap of race and equity.
Great, thank you. Thank you for reapplying.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Claire Mugler. She's not in the meeting as of now, but she did relay that she will be on at seven thirty PM other, rather than her seven forty PM start time. So I am contacting her as well to say that it is, her interview is now.
Okay, is anybody, is Harriet here more?
Yes, Harriet Stern is here.
Why don't we go ahead and just go ahead with Harriet?
Okay, sounds good. Harriet Stern, I'm going to promote you as panelist. If you can turn on your video and unmute yourself, you will have ten minutes for your interview.
Harriet, welcome.
Hi, thank you. You ready for me? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for being here early. Uh, so if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and then we'll.
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Harriet Stern and there's lots of reasons why I feel fortunate to have landed in Palo Alto eleven years ago. But an unexpected and delightful one is the prospect to serve on the Public Art Commission. It's truly rare to have the chance for civic engagement and public service on this level around the arts, my greatest passion and area of expertise. There's a lot of buzz around public art in Palo Alto right now and I would love to be a commissioner so that I can collaborate on initiatives on the horizon. And this includes teaming with the HRC and City Council to develop strong arts programming for King Plaza, using public art to celebrate Palo Alto values of cultural, racial and social equity, encouraging community participation and promoting economic recovery, recovery with public art and using public art to engage underserved or marginalized Palo Altons. and using public art to engage underserved or marginalized Palo Altons. All of this, plus it would be a thrill to help grow out some of those stellar public art programmings outlined in the recently delivered and truly excellent California Avenue Master Plan. Cal Ave is going to be knockout if all of those concepts, or I should say when all of those concepts complete. So I hope to gain your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Hi, Ms. Stern. Thanks so much for joining us and for applying. My question is less about your background and more about how you do your work. So I'm looking for two words that people who have worked with you would use to describe you and your work style. And it can be colleagues from any of your various backgrounds.
Well, I think they would say that I'm an inclusive person. And I think they would say that I'm a loving person.
Tell me more about inclusive.
Inclusive, that I want to have everybody participate. I don't want anybody left out in the margin, that I want to hear everybody's voice and opinion. Yeah, that's what I would say.
Seeing no hands, can I, shall I follow up quickly?
Go ahead.
Okay, I was interested in your answer about reaching segments of the community not currently engaged. What segments of the community are do you are you thinking of when you say that? Who should we be reaching out to that we're not?
Well, I think we don't do very much with seniors in our community. And I think that we could reach out to them using. Well, actually, I just, I applied for one of these grants for the the K wall for around Cal Avenue. I'm not an artist, but I have a friend who's a photographer. So I proposed a project using her photography because she focuses on seniors. And that that project has to do with seniors' stories, photographs of seniors, portraits of seniors, and their stories about their history in Palo Alto. So I think that we need to hear the voices of our seniors in our community. That's one underserved community. I think there's other ones, of course, and I mentioned the, you know, speaking about the, you know, those the little hate transporter that, you know, the, the working against hate, working for inclusion in my, the what I'd like, the, what I'd like to see happen. The, the, now I've forgotten, the name escapes me now when I said it, the transporter. That's silly, the coexist coach in the tolerant transporter, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Phil.
Curious reading your application here. So what are some differences between, at least a couple, between corporate art and public art?
Well, corporate art goes into buildings, but it sounds so usually, or hotels or hospitals. That was the most of the applications that we did, big sculpture for the center of a plaza or lobby or people's offices, those kinds of things. Whereas now, public art is art that's all around us. But it's, it sounds like the public art programming here is asking for intersection of public and private art, which is excellent, too. Public and corporate art, I should say, asking for the ability for the public to enter corporations, which is kind of outrageous. I love it. So that that's excellent. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Councilmember. Councilmember.
Thank you, thank you. I'm so sorry. Ms. Stern, thank you for applying. And I want to say I love your colors, from your eyeglasses to your clothing. They're very, very vibrant. Thank you. I wanted to ask, so in your application, it mentions that that you want to ensure that the installation and acquisition of art will reflect Palo Alto's values. Will you tell me what what you hear or what you perceive are Palo Alto's values?
Well, I think the values of, well, you all actually outline a lot of the values, don't you? And the platforms that you propose every January, their their values of inclusion and diversity. And I mean, we also have a platform for climate change this year, don't we? And healthy environment, sustainable development. I think these are our values. I'm sure there's many more, housing and housing equity. So I think that these are, these are our values.
Oh, so the priorities that we had defined are the values that you.
I think so. I think those are our values.
Very good. Thank you.
Can you, can you describe some of your previous previous art positions? Like, how, how did you have to do your job? Like, who did you work with? How did you have to collaborate? I mean, did you just, did you just choose the art yourself or did you need to work with other people?
Oh, I see. You mean in the corporate, the corporate art?
Yes.
Okay. So what you do is you you get hired by a corporate client and then you usually have a a committee within the corporation that you work with. It could be, it could be a plant, a facilities manager or plant manager that, and maybe if you're lucky, you just get to work with one person. But if you have to work with a team, it's a little bit more difficult because it's harder to get consensus. But yes, so you usually work with, say, you have a law firm and you're going to work on the art for the law firm. Because also, I mean, it's similar to working with Palo Alto, for example, because they're trying to express to their clients what their image is. So if you're walking into a law firm, whatever the art you're going to see is what they want to express to their clients. Trust, you know, longstanding in the community reliance. So that you would work with the art commission, they would literally have an art commission in their, their office that you would work with to decide which pieces of art. And then you would, you would talk to them, interface with them, figure out where the art needs to go. And then you would propose to them and then they would say yes or no. And it would be a few rounds. Of course, there's budgeting concerns and things like that.
Did you ever have a situation where you really disagreed with the direction they went or?
No, because I am the, they are the client. And of course, you make proposals and usually, you know, I don't know. I would make proposals based upon things that I thought they should see. So I wouldn't necessarily propose something that I didn't think should be there.
Okay, fair enough. I'm, we have time for one more question, if anybody has one. Okay, well, why don't you go ahead and wrap up?
Okay, sure. So I want to say thank you very much for considering my application. And if I would be appointed, I would serve with dedication and passion and respect. And I think it is a testament to the excellent work of the Public Art Program staff. And of course, with your support, the council's support and the mayor's office, that there's really a terrific number of qualified applicants for the the commission this this round. And among my fellow Palo Altons, there's the breadth of collective experience and scope of interest is really truly extraordinary. According to the Public Art Master Plan, our community aspires to ambitious, bold and forward-thinking art projects, the outcome of which will put Palo Alto on the map as an innovative and notable city whose identity is defined by its public art. That definition should be continually informed by the yearly priorities adopted by city council. These goals to which I, these are goals to which I also aspire, and I relish the opportunity to serve. Good luck with your deliberations.
Thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next applicant is Clea Mugler. Miss Clea Mugler, if you can turn on your video and unmute yourself, you'll have ten minutes for your interview.
Hello, thank you for joining us. So if you want to go ahead and just introduce yourself and then we'll start asking you questions.
Okay, so my name is Clea Dante Smugler, and I'm a Palo Alto resident. Over the past decade, I have volunteered in several positions at the Palo Alto School District as far as to become the P T A treasurer at a termin of later middle school. And during the last several years, I expended my artistic skills and acquired a master's degree in digital media arts from San Jose State University. While at the Arts and History Department, I connected with dozens of local and international artists and participated in multiple events in the Bay Area and overseas. I have lived in three different continents and consider myself someone who has a deep appreciation for other cultures. To me, art is very important as a medium, as it fosters new and it opens space for crucial conversations. I would love to be a part of the Public Art Commission to help all the members in making best, the best decisions for the city from the perspective of someone who is very passionate about art and has experience in producing and curating modern art. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So this degree you got in digital media arts, are you, does that mean you're working, well, are you just creating art yourself? Is that?
Yes, actually, I I do have my own practice. And I also, I'm working with a company to develop in digital, not digital media arts per se for like installations or exhibitions, but more towards the commercial side of it.
What does that mean?
Well, it means that when I, before I acquired the master's degree, I also was a graphic designer and web developer. And so right now I'm kind of using those skills as well as my artistic abilities to produce artwork.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Hi, Ms. Dante Smugler. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. You have a broad background, which is wonderful. And I wondered if you could tell us a little bit about how you do your work. And the question I'm looking for an answer to is what are two words that people who have worked with you would use to describe you and how you do your work?
You mean like the artistic work?
Just like.
Or working in general?
Working.
Working with other people?
Working in general with other people. So, and it can be from anywhere in your, in your background.
Okay, well, I am a very organized person and I really like to deliver things on time. And so in order to do that, I try to have a schedule and do everything as it's supposed to be done on time. And I'm also very dedicated. I really like to work with other people. And so I like to meet people and talk about art and kind of work, whenever I'm talking to people and developing my ideas, I feel that that's the best way to kind of, you know, develop new art artwork.
Is that, did you do that? For example, I was interested in reading about the artwork at Briones about the two thousand eleven tsunami and local Japanese families. Is that one of the ways you did that?
Yes, at that time, it was something that was very unexpected and affected a couple of families that we knew. And so I worked with, not only with other parents, but also with children to produce the artwork.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Let's remember stone.
Mr. Mayor, hi, thank you for applying. I'm curious if your thoughts on, is there any, you know, kind of your observations of public art around Palo Alto? Is there any type of art that you feel is really lacking or underrepresented? Or or, I mean, different art styles or or artists from various backgrounds? Anything there where you feel like Palo Alto's portfolio could really be more robust?
Well, I feel like today art became really something that people really pay attention to. And I did walk around Palo Alto to see some of the artworks that have been done. And most they were painted on walls and things like that. Because I'm coming from a digital area, I feel like people nowadays, they are very interested in artwork that are augmented or even projection mapping, that type of work. I feel like I, I think I only only saw one that was an artwork that also had augmented reality. And I wish maybe that the city had more of that type of work. And I also feel like we do have a very diverse community. And maybe we should explore that diversity more in the artwork.
Great, thank you.
You also said you felt like our art's not reaching a wide enough audience and that you would hope to increase engagement if you were on the commission. Can you talk a little bit more about that? First of all, why do you feel like it's not reaching people? And what could you do about it?
Well, this area, we do have a lot of artists and we do have very important universities. I feel like we could have more maybe new artists more engaged in the community. And we do have many communities, like different communities in Palo Alto. We have East Palo Alto, we have different type of people in this community. And I wish that we did have more work towards those communities.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you for applying, Ms. Mugler. Good evening. I wanted to ask you, you mentioned some of the tragedies tragedies that had taken place at near your neighborhood on Charleston due to the great separations and so forth. And that you, that there needs to be more work to reach the different generations in our community. And you also mentioned that you had worked at Briones. So has there been an opportunity to engage the the children, people with handicaps or functional needs in artwork and helping them come out or helping them be more engaged in everyday activity? A little bit more engaged in everyday activity?
Yes, actually, Briones does have a does have a department where there are a couple of children with disability. And art is actually a very good way for these kids to kind of show their emotions, right? And what they're thinking. Actually, it's been a while since I left Briones. My kids now are at Gunn High School. But yes, but but I feel like, and and they are at that age where we do have to talk about their feelings and about the community and what's going, what's happening actually at school. Even though we do have to stay home, we did have to stay at home for this past year. But kids are still communicating and they're expressing their feelings, of course. And one of the things that they were not, they were unable to do was to produce art the way that they used to. But I feel like we do have to work more with teenagers especially and try to have them more, they need to be more engaged in the community. And it's important for them to work with art, too, because that's a very good way for them to express their feelings and and to see, to 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 let us know how they feel about the community and how they feel about all the things that have been happening in the community.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so we just have like thirty seconds left if you want to wrap up.
Yes. Oh, so thank you very much for your time and for this opportunity. Just a final thought that I I would like for you to know that I am a very passionate person. I really love art and I really love our community. So if I have the chance to serve the community, I would really do my best. But thank you so much for your time.
And thank you for applying.
Of course.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Lisa Waltek. Lisa, if you, I'm going to promote you as panelist. If you could turn on your interview and unmute yourself, we will begin your ten minute interview.
Hello.
Hi, thank you for joining us. Somehow we're ahead of schedule. So if you could go ahead and just introduce yourself, we'll ask you questions when you finish.
Okay, I'm Lisa Waltek. I returned to Palo Alto after about 20 years away. I'm a practicing artist and I have three children in public school here. I was born and raised in Palo Alto. I went to Termon Junior High, Gunn High School and Stanford University. And then I worked as a graphic designer in downtown Palo Alto for a few years before heading east to get my MFA at the Rhode Island School of Design. And then after that, I worked as a creative director for 15 years for different organizations, including the Discovery Channel and the Metropolitan Museum of Art. But that's a little bit about my background. I really feel that my experience, I have two experiences that I think would contribute to my serving the community in Palo Alto on the Public Art Commission. And that is having spent 10 years living in Fort Greene, Brooklyn, where I saw the power of art to transform a community. It was a community that was very racially and socio-economically diverse. When I first moved there, there was a smattering of arts. But by the time I left, there was an incredible arts culture that had so many different types of participants. And it is now zoned as a arts district. Then after that, I moved to Costa Rica, to rural Costa Rica, where we were in a community of both Costa Ricans and a big international community. When we came, there was more art, both performance art and visual art than I could have imagined in this small rural place. And it grew and grew. And I started an event series there as well. But I saw the transformative power of art there to bring all sorts of different cultures together. So upon returning to Palo Alto, 20 years later, I've been introduced to this incredible rich diversity of people from all over the world. I feel lucky to count some of them as my friends in my neighborhood. And I would like to do the same thing with the commission is celebrate the cultural differences and knit the commonalities together for a united community. Thank you.
Thank you. To council, somebody question, Councilmember Cormac?
My traditional question, Ms. Waltek, welcome and welcome back to Palo Alto.
Thank you.
My question is about how you do your work. So in your experiences at Brooklyn as a graphic designer in Costa Rica, what are two words that people would use to describe you and how you do your work?
I think one of the words would be gusto. I put everything I do, I jump in, I am very enthusiastic and I really embrace whatever is at hand. And the other would be creative, whether it's problem solving or coming up with new ideas. I'm, I'm never at a loss for a way to, to solve something or do something new.
Okay, so quick follow-up. How are you going to get art involved with public restrooms? That sounds fascinating.
Well, as I, as I explained, my models for public art was, when I was in graduate school, my program was run by mostly Dutch professors. And my, my hero, in fact, in graphic design, he designed all the Dutch money, the stamps, the mailboxes, the restrooms. And he did it with a sense of humor, but also a way to reach out. So I think to understand how people use restrooms where they're needed and play a little bit with real usability, what would make, what would keep them clean? What would make them accessible? What would make them useful? And then build on top of that, maybe a little sense of whimsy, a little, you know, some, I know some tricks where in cities they've done things where it looks clear on the outside, you walk in and then it fogs over. So it really keeps you private, but it has that little mystique to it. So something that would encourage use, but also bring a little delight to the community, even with something as utilitarian as a restroom.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Smear Burt.
Yeah, I wanted to follow on with your comments about Brooklyn and Costa Rica. And it sounds like in those settings, the art was not overwhelmingly public funded and, and that there was something organic to what occurred there. And, you know, your example on whether it's restrooms or otherwise, I'm just interested in, in an expanded sense of a canvas space that exists in the, in the, in the public sector that we've underutilized, that that are, how can we have art come about in more places? And with more reflecting the expression of the community?
I think, I mean, my examples in Brooklyn were broad in terms of, there were many performance spaces. There were everything from big public stages to black box theaters. There were artist studios, there were community studios. So the community could come and use a studio depending upon what they wanted to do. There were tons of kind of grassroots children's classes. There were opportunities for community days where people could come for free and use the studio and sit outside. They could come, there were family days, there were family dance parties. So what really happened is they got the community to come together in so many different spots all around. I mean, we lived in the heart of it and we used to be big subscribers and patrons of the arts in New York City. But we started just going within two blocks of our house because there were over six theaters. And some of these, these children's classes have grown so much that they've attracted international artists and residents that have not only taught children their skills, but they have collaborated on public, public pieces of art. They have done art shows, they've done art shows together. So the kids feel this real sense of pride in working with these famous artists. So there's been so many ways to draw people in that they feel a part of it. And I think, you know, I'm, I'm going to say this a little bit more in my closing statement, but having volunteered at some of the recent art events in Palo Alto, there is a thirst for it and interest in it. And there's so many creative people here. I, I think they would pour out of the woodwork, even people that didn't think of themselves as creative would come out to participate. So I think we have an incredible opportunity in that sense of participatory art.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
So I, I really liked, you know, your answer to the question about goals. I mean, you had five specific goals you laid out. So very energetic and it'd be great to see you get through these. You know, number one was demystification of public art commissions. So could you talk about that one?
Sure, so I, as I said, I'm an artist myself and I have responded to some of these calls. But, you know, I've found them, you know, maybe in a newsletter or an Instagram post. And then I've gone back in to find them and I've, and I'm a usability expert. That is my background at interactive, you know, interactivity. And I couldn't even find the call. So I think there is a confusing way to participate. Not only that, but when I filled out that application, even this application, I was very meticulous about keeping to my word counts. And when I pasted them in, none of them worked. So I think there are challenges in opacity and, and making these very public and people finding them and then knowing what to do with them.
You're going to fix our website as well, I suppose.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
We did actually launch a new website, so I don't know. So there's about a minute left if you want to go ahead and give your closing statement.
Sure, I wanted to say that I participated in Breathe With Me, which is in my backyard, it's right behind me where I live. And it was just a great experience. It was wonderful because so many people came together. And not only were people participating in this global project, but we as volunteers were getting to know each other after the pandemic and, you know, in behind our masks and we were working together to solve problems. We had a big problem with wind. So I found myself literally building cardboard walls behind the canvases so that they wouldn't blow, blow up too much and so people could still paint with them. And I, I just want to add a little bit about a storytelling event series that I started in Costa Rica. And that was a really wonderful thing because people came together of so many different cultures and they were able to tell their stories. And people saw, learned about other cultures, but also saw what was common among us as human beings. So I think, you know, when I, I want to do a little thought experiment here and to answer your question, Mr. Burt, about public art, I think we could do, I envision a project where we ask people all over the community to send in just a picture of themselves and answer the prompt, what does community mean to you? And we could get just bombarded with all of these, this text and, and personal text and images. We could have a central place where we printed them out in the same format, on the same paper, in the same size. And then we posted them all over town in, you know, in grids of people where we could see who we are as a community. I think that that would be so impactful and would reveal ourselves, reveal how people thought, who they were and, and who we are collectively. So I think there's, I think this is a wonderful community and I would love to serve on a board that could enhance and continue the work that you've all done with public art.
Great, thank you, thank you for applying.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And our next applicant is Mark Weiss. Mr. Mark Weiss, I will promote you as panelist. If you can turn on your video and unmute yourself, we will begin your 10-minute interview.
Hello, Mark, are you there? Hello, good evening, councilmembers.
Here you are. So you know how this works? Yeah, go ahead and do a little introductory statement and then we'll ask you some questions.
My name is Mark Weiss. I've been a community member for about 45 years. I went to Fremont Hill School, Termon School, Gunn High School, moved back consecutively to the community in about 92. In 94, I started an arts company called Earthwise Productions, which is mostly performing arts, concert series at Coverly and Mitchell Park most principally. I also have two other arts-related initiatives. I have a blog called Plastic Alto that has a lot of coverage of the arts and other matters. And about a year ago, I started sort of a record label or an online content aggregator and producer called Lions With Wings on Bandcamp, which is actually named for a public art piece at Stanford campus, the Stanford Griffins. But it's a collection of performances. In lieu of a concert series, I have artists streaming content uniquely for my label. I also have a history of civic engagement. As you all probably know, I ran for city council three times and I am a candidate for these commissions. I believe this is my fifth time, but my first time integrating my arts work with my civic engagement as a candidate for the Public Arts Commission.
Great. Go to the council, Councilmember Cormac.
Mr. Weiss, good evening, thanks for joining us. I'm interested in your comment about supporting performance arts as part of the purview. Can you tell us a little bit more about what, what your vision is for that?
Well, it's obviously something that I've thought about and occasionally speak up on, you know, in the 25 years since I started Earthwise. I did work, I think an interesting precedent for where we are today is the World Music Day that was started by the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, Claude Esron, in 2009. And it's based on a concept called Fête de la Musique, which is a worldwide celebration of the solstice. And especially in France where they started it. And it's a pun, if you speak French, on make music. And Peter Drekmeier had mentioned to me and when he was mayor about that project. And so I did volunteer and work on Claude's committee. And I, I know I saw something, plus I believe Mr. Du Bois has mentioned this to me in our recent meeting, that there is some discussion of remounting the World Music Day, maybe integrating music in a slightly different way. Palo Alto also historically, we have such wonderful parks and some of them more than others are more conducive to music in the parks. And we have a history of that, that I'm sometimes a contributor to. I also think, and I, I, I think I, I've spoken a little bit about this privately to some people. The Mayfet Parade, maybe, you know, we have wonderful musicians and kids with the schools. Maybe somehow we could thematically use more music. I know this year it's related to the Louis Armstrong performance, Whatever Wonderful World. And I actually thought, since Louis Armstrong is from New Orleans, it would be interesting to have a New Orleans theme going forward. New Orleans is very famous for parades. I said something similar to that at the council retreat because you happen to have a speaker named Dr. John. And I pointed out there was a New Orleans musician named Dr. John. I have a lot of ideas for the performing arts in Palo Alto as specifically public-private partnerships or through our commissions. Sometimes people talk about the Rec Commission could be great for the parks since they do manage the parks. The Recreation Foundation for a while was related to the, as the fiduciary thing for the, for the World Music Day. I think, I know there are some comments, I didn't read them in entirety, about, from Mr. Burt, Mr. Du Bois, about could music be used as a stimulus for downtown business and maybe California Avenue? I think that's a really interesting idea. I'd love to be a resource for that going forward. And I have to say that I, I, I've raised this point a little bit off topic, but that, that if we taxed businesses, maybe we can earmark a percent of that towards music in the parks or like you say, music downtown. But that's a little bit off the purview. I'm not sure exactly how Public Arts Commission should integrate to or expand to performing arts. I love dance as well. And like you, I know Councilmember Cormac and one of the other candidates were involved in choruses. It'd be great. I mean, with, you know, I, I don't have a set agenda on what I would do to contribute to the Arts Commission, but I have a pretty significant engagement with the, with familiarity with the program. I'm actually married to former Arts Commissioner Terry Acebo-David, who is coaching me from the corner here.
Thanks, Mr. Weiss. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let another colleague ask you a question.
So you have four more, four minutes left, Mark. Vice Mayor Burt.
Yeah, so thanks for your comments on the kind of prospect of expanding our art commission purview beyond visual arts to performing arts. I think it's an intriguing concept. But I'd like to pivot to, you, you mentioned in your application an affinity for some of the graffiti art at the, at the skateboard rink. And I am interested in any thoughts you have on how we might be able to embrace some forms of street art that are by, by youth and, and giving them a greater opportunity for expression in either venues that are more their venues or otherwise?
I appreciate the question, Pat, or Councilmember Burt. And I also am recalling that you told me once that you went to the Ridge School Concert in Mountain View, which is a wonderful program, a little bit larger than our purview and that your favorite artist there was Jack White of the White Stripes. So it'd be wonderful to get someone like that. There's actually, in the skate world, there's a lot of skaters who are musicians or musicians who are skaters. And I do appreciate Mr. Tanaka and Mr. Cormac's council memo about the, the opportunity to expand either the Greer Park and, and maybe have a second expanded type of, of, of skate park, public-private investment or some type of thing. I wouldn't say I would earmark or change the purview of the Public Arts Commission to something that is really more the Palo Alto Unified School District. I know we work well with the schools. There is former school board members on council, that kind of thing. Historically, we have a teacher at Gunn High School on council now. It's a youth-oriented thing, it'd be great to do something for young people. I mean, Mr. Tanaka, from what I've observed, is a very good skater himself, at least as a commuter and electric skater. And certainly it's not true that only kids want to skate. I think there's a lot of opportunity. I'd like to, to, to maybe tap some artists about what they think would be a cool way to do a skate park. Graffiti arts, graffiti influences modern art. The Pace Gallery downtown had JR. The Pace Gallery downtown had JR, who's sort of a glor, a very glorified international kind of graffiti artist photographer. I think the, the Spirit of the Black Lives Matter mural was, to the extent it was temporary and using a street, not a traditional canvas, I think it had sort of a graffiti art element, but absolutely, I'd love to get kids involved more. I think they're qualified, a lot of the, we've had amazing art, young people from the Palo Alto and Gunn schools. And I think they're, they should be encouraged to apply for a general call for entries.
Thank you.
So, so yeah, I actually met with the World Music crew tonight and they're talking about trying to spread it out over the month of June rather than one day. So Martha, there's about one minute left. If you want to give a wrap up statement.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to have, you know, 10 minutes of the bully pulpit in terms of, you know, in a meeting with you guys or becoming a public record or being an opportunity to chime in. Like I said, I've gone this exact process a few times. I'm definitely gonna be working in the arts, you know, I completed 25 years and would kind of look forward to doing another 25 years here. I'd love to do some in collaboration with some of the current commissioners and I really appreciate some of the, of the candidates and would love to do it. So thanks for your consideration.
Okay, Mark, thanks for applying. Okay, council, that, we're at the break. So if everybody could be back properly at 8:30. We'll pick up with the Storm, Stormwater Commission. So see you at 8:30. We got 60 seconds. Council members, if you're there, please turn your camera on. Okay, why don't we go ahead and start? We'll keep this on track. Danny, if you want to.
Of course. Our next applicant is for the Stormwater Management Oversight Committee. And this is Stephanie McDonald. Stephanie, I'm going to promote you as panelist. If you can unmute yourself and turn on your video, the 10 minute interview will begin.
And I'll just remind council members, we have five applicants for four openings. Stephanie, if you could go ahead, just introduce yourself and then we'll, if you want to make an opening statement and we'll ask you some questions.
Sure. Yeah. I will first, good evening, council members. My name is Stephanie McDonald and I'm a resident here in Palo Alto in the old Palo Alto neighborhood. I have been passionate about environmental issues from a young age and I'm always looking for new ways to get involved and make an impact, especially in my local community. As a senior engineering technician with the city of Foster City for the past three years, I have gained valuable experience in stormwater management and other engineering practices and principles. As a certified stormwater inspector, I perform all construction stormwater inspections and business industrial stormwater inspections for the city as required by our municipal regional permit. I understand and implement our enforcement response plan and I also help educate business. And I also help educate businesses and contractors on best management practices. I understand the implementation process of regulatory documents and can interpret and deliver such documents by reifying them into digestible information for the general public. I hope to bring this experience to the Stormwater Management Oversight Committee and offer a new perspective on the important challenges we face in stormwater management.
Great, thank you very much for applying. Go to council, council member Cormac.
Thank you, Mary DeBois. Good evening, Mrs. McDonald. Thanks so much for joining us. Actually, it says McDonald on our thing. Is that right? Is there an L?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, welcome and thanks so much for applying. You obviously have a lot of directly relevant experience in this area. My question has more to do with how you do your work. So I'm looking for two words that other people whom you work with would use to describe you and how you do your work. And it could be, you know, people at Pets in Need, it could be people at Foster City. What are, what are two words that people would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Yeah, I think the first thing that comes to mind, I think, would be that I'm a team player. I'm always volunteering to help with different projects in my current role. Yeah, unfortunately with Pets in Need, I haven't been able to volunteer there actively for a while because of COVID. But when I was there, I was always open to help out with whatever needed to be done. And so that's something I take a lot of pride in is being a team player. I think another thing people would use to describe me is that I'm able to, this isn't one word exactly, but I'm able to work with a lot of different types of people. I'm easy to get along with and I am comfortable working with people from a lot of different backgrounds. I work with contractors a lot. I work with the public a lot and as well as internal staff.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Burke.
Yes, I wanted to ask about kind of your familiarity and your thoughts on different technological approaches to the stormwater we've management. We've in this last bond measure took what was kind of a trial that we did in one neighborhood of more naturalized stormwater management. And and have expanded that to now being really the driving vision for what we're doing in this bond measure. How familiar are you with those approaches and what are your thoughts on them?
Yeah, so I'm not super familiar with the exact project you're talking about, but I am pretty familiar with different stormwater projects in general. So I understand what green stormwater infrastructure is, what the examples of those are. I, I actually work on a lot of development sites where they install bio retention areas. Pretty, that's pretty much the standard now, so familiar with that. I also, in addition to the stormwater inspections I perform, I also perform construction inspections. And that does include stormwater infrastructure upgrades, inlet, replacement, things like that. So I think I have a pretty good background where I have a, some of that technical knowledge that I could bring in. That would help me get up to speed quickly on what the ongoing projects that Palo Alto is working on right now.
Thank you.
It's not a, it's not a big negative if you haven't, but have you watched a Palo Alto stormwater meeting or seen one?
Haven't watched one of the stormwater meetings. I have looked through the agendas, but I haven't watched meetings. I have attended several city council meetings. But yeah, not, I have only read through the agendas in minutes for some of the stormwater management.
So you've seen the agenda, so you know the kind of things they, they look at?
Yeah.
Great. Councilmember Kate.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Thank you for applying. I wanted to ask, you mentioned in your application that you're a volunteer with Peninsula for Everyone, a nonprofit housing and transportation advocacy group. And recently, one of their advocacy, their means of advocacy is to plaster some posters around a neighborhood with President Trump, the MAGA saga, and then also with gun toting couple. So is that the kind of advocacy that you would support?
Um, I'm not sure what you're referring to exactly.
So I guess not all the membership now. I just wanted to find out if it's something that you knew about as a volunteer for the Peninsula for Everyone.
No, I wasn't aware of that.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Tanaka.
So what do you think are some best practices that you see in other cities for stormwater that you think we should adopt here in our city?
Yeah, so in my experience with Foster City, one of the biggest things I, or one of the biggest challenges I think we face, and I think this is the case probably across the board, is public outreach and education. Because I'm, I think if you're not in the industry, stormwater, it's kind of hidden. It's behind the scenes program. And I think a lot of people, they don't even realize that everything that goes down the drain, at least in Palo Alto's case, everything that goes down the drain goes directly into water systems. There's no treatment. And so things like, little things like that, I think are really important, not only for residents to know, but for businesses to know. And to educate businesses on what programs that the city has, like, for example, your rebate programs for the residents. I think there's, you guys have a lot of great rebate programs. But I think, you know, having the program itself is one thing, but then also letting people know that it exists and what their options are and how to actually implement those things is kind of the next step, which is, I think, sometimes forgotten about, like we've seen with the vaccine rollout, for example. It's one thing to create the vaccine, but it's another thing to actually distribute it and get people educated on it. So I think that's a really important thing that I've seen in my experience that I try to do in my own work when I visit with businesses and contractors.
So just over, a little bit over a minute left, if you want to give like a closing statement?
Yeah, sure. So I'm a passionate individual who is determined to help preserve our natural networks and create a safe environment for people and wildlife. My hands-on experience and technical background would be a compliment to the wide breadth of lea and financial knowledge that is held by the current members of the Stormwater Management Oversight Committee. I offer the perspective of a municipal employee who has experience in permit regulation and compliance, as well as field and enforcement experience. I believe I would round out the committee by bringing this experience to the table alongside the impressive backgrounds of the other candidates and current members. Stormwater management is an important part of any community. And as we look to lead the way in conservation and environmental programs, it cannot be overlooked. I believe I would be a valuable addition to the committee. And I would be excited to offer my time and expertise to the city of Palo Alto to help manage and oversee this important program. I appreciate, appreciate you all taking the time to consider my application. Thank you.
Thank you very much for applying.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. And our next applicant is Hal Mickelson. And Mr. Hal Mickelson, if you can unmute yourself and turn on your video, your 10 minute interview will begin.
Hal, thanks for being here tonight. I know you're currently on the committee. If you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and then we'll ask you some questions.
All right, I'm Hal Mickelson. I live in the Green Meadow neighborhood of Palo Alto. I am at present the chair of the committee. And I have a short opening when you're ready for it, but I'm basically, if I may go ahead with that.
Yes, please.
We had 64% of property owners who voted in early 2017 approve increasing and extending our stormwater management fee at $13.65 per month per typical household. On the condition that we have an oversight committee with the very simple charter of coming back to you, the council, once a year and saying that the funds raised for this purpose are spent for nothing else. That's what we do. That's why we have this Stormwater Management Oversight Committee, to be able to come back and look at the programs, look at the projects, look at the expenditures and confirm that the money is going to this purpose as promised to the voters. Now, around the edges, our committee looks for every opportunity to promote conservation and sustainability and green infrastructure. And we work on those things wherever we can. It's subject to the ability of the staff to help us out. If we stray too far from our mandate, there's a risk we make an unreasonable demand on the staff. But thus far, I'll mention their names later. This staff has just been exemplary in helping us explore those areas as well as our core responsibility. I was on the Blue Ribbon Task Force in 2016 that formulated the ballot measure for approval by the property owners. I've been on predecessor committees and I hope that we can still squeeze some usefulness out of my experience.
Okay, thank you. I think you may have seen it, we put together a new board and commission handbook.
Yes.
One of the things we added in there was term limits and I think there's pros and cons to that. I wonder what your thoughts on term limits are?
Term limits are a good thing. They're necessary even in nonprofit organizations. If any of you are active in nonprofits, they may be even more necessary there than they are in government or in business. Because if you don't have term limits for a nonprofit board, some of the nonprofit board members think of themselves as owning, you know, the, the enterprise. In the local government and in our boards and commissions, I think term limits are a healthy thing. I haven't hit them yet, but I think I've got one more term to go.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Hal. Thanks for your service and for reapplying. I'm, I'm curious, what do you, what are your hopes to accomplish in another term that you haven't been able to so far?
Well, I've mentioned that we do all we can around the edges to promote sustainability and green infrastructure. And the staff is looking at programs that would go farther in that direction. And I've made very clear that I will support those programs as long as we're working within the $13.65 budget we have now. You won't, you won't find me advocating increasing the money that is available. But if we can increase the initiatives for green infrastructure and sustainability, I think if you talk to every present member of the committee, including the other ones you'll speak to later tonight, we're, we all sing from the same page of the hymn book on that point. We, we want to do everything we can in those areas.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Burke.
Yeah, hi, Hal. Just wanted to follow up on that issue. Are you saying that you would not support any increase in this stormwater fee in the future to pay for a green infrastructure? Or were you saying that our present initiatives need to just stay within that current funding budget?
Well, you're a politician and I'm not. Politicians learn never to say never. It's, I won't say that I would never support a change. But what our committee has said to the staff so far is, remember, it's only in 2016 and the election of 2017 that we proposed the increase that we now have. Had we not had that election, the fee would have gone down to between $4 and $5 per month for property, for, per residential property. And, and we have at present an ongoing fee of $6.62 per parcel per month with $7.03 that will increase with inflation for capital improvements. And we have a 15-year capital improvement program. In 2016, the Blue Ribbon Committee that proposed that free fee structure sweat bullets to keep it within those limits and not to ask for more money. So I, I'm not going to idly say, gee, we can always ask for more money. That's a huge decision and I'd be willing to be persuaded that we had to do it. But my instinct is to say, until somebody shows us something new and better, let's work within the constraints we now have.
Okay, so first, you, you sound more political than I would, but what my question was really, if you faced an evaluation and determine that for us to meet our environmental objectives on stormwater runoff, we needed a higher fee structure. Where would you stand on that?
Well, there's a lot of what ifs. We, we have to, we have to get a regional permit. And the, the regional permit granting people could someday come back and say that we have to do more. We could be told that we have to do a lot more because of climate change and what may happen to the level of the bay. So all that I will say is that if you look at the minutes of the, of the meetings we've had and when we've discussed on this subject, I've been pretty scrupulous of saying, you know, nothing we have said so far, nothing we have said so far advocates increasing the monthly fee.
Okay, I just had that the consideration of what we should do environmentally is not necessarily determined by external mandates.
Yeah, well, the story you'll hear again from all of the staff and from the other committee members, we have a, a major success story and, and that is South Gate. I was on the predecessor committee when we were told, you know, somehow the South Gate development was approved with no storm drains. And the challenge before us was what to do about that. And I, I can live a long time on the reputation I have from voting yes at the time to say that we would make South Gate a poster child for green stormwater management, for managing runoff, for having the infill gardens and planting spaces where runoff can go. And so we turned the lack of a facility there into an opportunity to show what could be done in, in an innovative way and frankly, without spending a lot of extra money.
Yeah, and that's, that's the model that, that we embraced in the, in the new stormwater plan. And it not only was making lemons, lemonade from lemons, it really has a different value-based result. Okay, thanks.
So Hal, there's 30 seconds left if you want to do a closing statement.
We have an exceptional staff. I would be remiss if I did not mention Karen North, Michelle Jeremiahus, Pam Boyle Rodriguez, Isabel Zakarchuk, Vicky Ty, Joanne Tran, Joni Perez and Rajiv Hada, who worked very hard to enable us to do what we do. It is a pleasure to keep working with them and I would not be applying if it wasn't fun to work with such good people.
Thank you. Thank you for applying, yeah.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, Danny.
Thank you. Yes, so our next applicant would be Dina Massar or Mossar. However, she is not in the meeting. Catherine Perman has agreed to go next. I will promote her as panelist. And Catherine, we asked that you turn on your video and unmute yourself for your 10 minute interview. And Catherine, we asked that you turn on your video and unmute yourself for your ten minute interview.
Hi, welcome. So this is a goes very quick. It's a ten minute interview. If you want to spend a minute introducing yourself and then council members will ask you questions.
Sure, thank you very much. Good evening, council members. I am very excited to have this opportunity to chat with you. Just want to preface my little song and dance here with. This is the first time I really tried to get involved with actively with the city organization and. Very impressed with all the experience I've heard about so far and even though I would be a novice, I'm hoping that the breadth of my experience that I would bring. Would make me an interesting candidate. Why did I apply? I had been watching. The stormwater meetings. I live in Palo Alto and El Palo Alto and. I've talked about in my application, some of my personal interests in terms of native plants and. Stormwater, but let me just talk about my experience a little bit, especially some things that aren't in the application. I have both practical and academic experience. I did some research for my masters modeling the impact of runoff on the Colorado River. Then I worked as an environmental engineer in the oil industry and I did a bunch of like it ranged from regulatory analysis to doing permit work, permit applications. When I moved to Palo Alto some time ago. I pursued a degree, a PhD at Stanford in civil engineering. And then, like many, I pivoted to a wonderful, fun career in tech. Where all my interest in working with computers led to. Managing a technical engineering team and we did software work and had to do a lot of, I had to do a lot of. I had to be responsible for a lot of compliance, regulatory compliance and financial auditing work. As per the requirements of the US Postal Service, nothing to do with stormwater. Also, I'm very interested in participating in a Palo Alto city organization. I would love to learn about the nitty gritty of governance, what you guys do. Seeing projects go through their life cycle, making our community a better place and giving back to my home would be an honor.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman McCormack.
Ms. Perman, or perhaps I should say Dr. Perman, only in Palo Alto does someone with a PhD from Stanford in civil and environmental engineering state that they are a novice. Throw that out there. All right, so my standard question here really has to do with how you do your work because these commissions are collaborative by nature. So in your industry experience or your, you know, dance and Palo Alto community childcare experience, save the bay, anything. What are two words that people would use to describe you and how you work?
I don't think I can restrict it to two words, but I would say that I was known for both. Attention to detail. Making sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, but also I would. Pull back the team, my team or the teams I was working with, so we would stay in touch with the big picture, you know, what the goals are, what our responsibilities are.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
So thanks for filling us in on who's been watching the stormwater meetings, one or two. Those ratings are very low, you know. Yeah, so I mean, I don't know if you heard the previous speaker, but. You know, it sounds like you've watched some of the meetings, but part of this is really managing. The the bond and the financing. How do you find that aspect of the of the work?
It's something that I had to work with the realities of managing projects and. Making sure that. The budgets and the documentation is all in alignment and consistent and correct. I participate in a lot of financial audits with the US Postal Service, so and oddly, I really kind of got a kick out of it.
Yeah, well, you definitely have an interesting mix of, you know, government. And your education, so. Any other questions, council members? Vice Mayor Burke.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on. This issue of our orientation toward essentially a green stormwater infrastructure. Do you have thoughts on that and? Ideas on where perhaps we should go from from here?
Interesting question. Let me take that in two parts. The green infrastructure to me is just probably one of the more exciting technical developments that, you know, they started off in environmental engineering. In the seventies. And a lot of it was, my start was at Utah State University, so they were actually doing a lot of really interesting things with algae and plants. I didn't do that. I was on the computer side, but to me. To work with our our natural surroundings and respect it and and. Leverage it to. Get more efficiency for our goals is just, it's like, it's just so exciting. Now, that's sort of the. You don't want to get too excited about that, but my second part of my answer is. As much as I would love to participate in designing and, you know. Coming up with project ideas, my understanding is that this committee, the Oversight Committee, is really there to provide oversight. To fulfill the requirements of that of the original fee structure vote, so I understand that I. Wouldn't necessarily be doing design work, but I would be getting to read about it and see what the experts in the. Supporting departments would be providing, so. And I am interested in that, too. It's a type of green, you know.
So we have time for one more question if anybody has has a question. Okay, if you want to go ahead and maybe give a closing statement.
Um, I don't have anything prepared. I was thinking maybe I would respond to some of the questions. So I guess that being said, I just want to reiterate that it's been. A fun experience to participate in this interview and think about possibly serving on the Stormwater Committee Oversight Committee. And I'm just hoping I'm given an opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, then. Thank you for applying.
Thank you, and our next applicant is Dina Mossar. Dina, I will promote you as panelist. If you can unmute yourself and turn on your video, we will begin your ten minute interview.
Dina, welcome. You've been through this before. You're muted. If you want to go ahead and give an opening statement. Then we'll ask you questions. There, there you go.
There. All right. Thank you. Um, yeah, I I have served on this committee for the last four years and the reason I was originally interested in doing it is. A, because the city is of great interest to me and it's kind of fun to. Do a small thing that is important to the community. And more important than that, as a council member, I had lived through the trials and tribulations of getting the stormwater. Fee actually implemented, and so it's it's a good experience for me to. Sort of see it, the program rolling out, seeing its successes and. Having an opportunity to make sure the community gets what it thought it was going to pay for.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmembers. Councilmember Cormac.
Hi, Ms. Mossers. Nice to see you. Thanks for joining us. So such a wide variety of experiences. I'd forgotten how many things you did when you were on council. Just out of curiosity, which which of these experiences do you think prepared you best for serving on the Stormwater Management Oversight Committee?
Well, I don't know. I think probably just the city council experience. I have a good understanding of what the bond issue is, how it was set up, what its origins are, the troubles it went through. And the importance of representing the community to make sure that. The city delivers what it said it was going to deliver by asking the public to pay for it.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome.
Councilmember Kip.
Thank you for your service again, you know, continue on with the council, being a council member. Ms. Mossar, what? So you said to continue to make sure that you. That the community. Know what they're paying for. So what does the community think that they're paying for with this stormwater management?
The community was given a very explicit list of projects that that would be paid for. By the bond and. The projects range from stormwater upgrades to additional stormwater capacity. Helping in low line areas to prevent flooding in certain areas. That's that's part of what the public paid for and the public also paid for. Green infrastructure improvements over time, small portion of what the public's paying for, but by and large, the public really paid to bring. Palo Alto stormwater system up to modern standards.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So Dina, are you involved in other boards or commissions at this point?
No, I am not. This is, this is my little, this is my little toe in the water.
Great. Yeah, I was just curious. I mean, you've been involved in a lot of things and. Obviously, separate. Kido Creek, I can never say that word. I mean, has there been? As as you've been on this. Committee, has there been any, anything that surprised you?
No, nothing has surprised me. Unlike, I I served on the Library Bond Advisory Committee, which was really much more constrained in our conversations than the Stormwater Committee is. And the reason for that is, it's not exactly surprising, but it's different. The reason for that is this pocket of money for green infrastructure. And so staff is working diligently to figure out the best ways to actually. Try out some ideas, implement some ideas that they know that will work. They're struggling to figure out how they can pay for green infrastructure improvements. And so the committee has a fair amount of opportunity to talk about green infrastructure, even though the bulk of the money is really being spent. On the the stormwater system itself and in the upgrade, the modernization of that stormwater system. So so the conversations could be kind of fun because they're. They're. They're sort of imaginative, you know, if we did this, if we did that. In addition, I've just joined a subcommittee that's working with the consultants that the city hired. To look at possible additional funding sources for green infrastructure. And that's going to prove to be a really interesting opportunity, I think, for me.
Yeah, well, that got a couple more hands to go up. We're going to run out of time. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Dina, thank you for all your all your incredible service to this community and for reapplying. And I'm, I'm just curious with with all your involvement in Palo Alto, what is? What's driving you to continue to to serve and what are you most passionate about that you just that you hope to be able to achieve in the second term?
Well, the one I'm most passionate about is making sure that the public gets what the public voted to get, and that's really very important. I'm also passionate about. Helping the effort of staff to figure out ways that we can actually afford and and do. Cost justifiable and successful green infrastructure projects. So that, I mean, that's, that's, that's why any member of the committee is really there.
Great, thank you.
Answer your question?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Burke.
Yeah, just following up on the, hi, Dina. Green infrastructure issues and I appreciate that the current bond measure. Is has constraints on how far we can go in that direction. I'm intrigued that there may be other funding sources that. We may be able to tap into in a more significant way. Do you have any thoughts on? The willingness of the community to. Invest in and pay for. Additional green infrastructure if it was determined that that's what it would take.
Ah, well. We were just this little subcommittee that I I mentioned, we were just presented with sort of a table. Of all the different kinds of things that people use to pay for this. And it's very complicated and every one of them has a plus and a minus, and sometimes the minus is sort of stomach ache minus, you know. And it, what I think is really important, and I think this is where the city staff is focused, is doing some pilot programs, showing how. Wonderful these things can be to have, you know, greenery around rather than pavement around. I think the public would be very happy to. And probably eventually with different neighborhoods would be asking. For these sorts of implementations in their own neighborhood because it's a big improvement over what we currently have. But I think I think we're starting exactly in the place that we need to start with is a small amount of money, focus our attention on on. Projects and then start, you know, as the staff is doing, start looking at how we can expand the funding so that we can do more and more over time.
Well, just thinking about what you just said, and I appreciate it's not. Really, this part is not in the purview of the Oversight Committee, but I think you're right that. Most people probably don't, aren't very familiar with the Southgate program and. How attractive it is while being more positive environmentally. And so it makes me think about that we need to do a better job of familiarizing. The rest of the community with. The advantages of that kind of program.
Yes, and the committee has talked about that at great length, actually, about how do you make people aware of it? And the Southgate program actually started, it was really great, it ran down, there was a period about a year and a half ago when it looked pretty pathetic. And I just was walking by the other day, it looks a whole lot better. And so, again, we just have to make sure that we don't. As a city, we we don't just get too far ahead of our ability to to maintain and take care of and. And get the community involved so that it's a positive experience for all. That will make it easier for us to do what we need to do in the future, I think.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
We have thirty seven seconds left if you want to.
Well, I don't know, I think I, I think I probably said everything I want to say. I I would like to continue, continue contributing to the community and. This is a committee that I've enjoyed working on, enjoy very much working with the staff and the other committee members. I think we make a good team. And I'd like to be able to continue in those efforts.
And well, thank you for applying again.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Bob Wenzlau. Bob, I will promote you as panelist. If you can turn on your video and unmute yourself, you will have ten minutes to start your interview.
Hey, Bob.
I think you, hopefully you see me now.
We do. So thank you for applying again. Okay, if you want to give an opening statement and then we'll ask you some questions.
Sure, I am always happy to serve Palo Alto and and. In many regards, serve in the areas where you would find my contributions helpful. My history with the. Stormwater was basically. Observing that when it came time to renew the stormwater. Fee assessment that the community. At that point had no one stepping up to. Lead the initiative and. So I offered to lead the initiative with. Sue, I think Susan Rosenberg. And we created a a strong team, had obviously a lot of insights and were able to. Bring a. To win this initiative or this this bond measure and ultimately after winning it. There was the topic of governance. This was the first time I'd served on this type of a committee and I think where I have been seeing. My contribution is. A little bit as someone who. Might ask some left field questions. I've been very interested in community engagement messaging. I've been very interested in community engagement, messaging, um, creating, uh, understanding within the community of what our, um, stormwater and green infrastructure is. Uh, I think you noticed by background, I'm an environmental engineer, um, civil engineer and, um, run a, environmental company within Palo Alto. So I'm a Palo Alto small, small business person. So with that, I hope, um, uh, to continue serving you. So. Any questions? Probably never chatted about. The only one career I just have never, sometime I'd love to do a coffee with you. I mean, it'd be really good to, good to get to know you a little better. So.
Yeah, it'd be great. Nice to meet you in this strange.
Yeah, for your service and, um, uh, the balance I've, I've had the opportunity to work with over the, over the years. So thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Vice Mayor, do you have a question?
Uh, yeah. So, uh, first for those who really don't know Bob's commitment to the community, it goes all the way back to the seventies when he was at Stanford and was one of the founders of, uh, one of the first curbside recycling programs in the country here in Palo Alto. And, uh, his service has continued, uh, to this day. He, uh, he led the stormwater bond committee, um, so that, uh, it's probably just so he could get the big salary of serving on the oversight committee. And, um, so, uh, having said that, Bob, uh, did you get a chance to hear my other questions about kind of a focus on where we're headed in this evolution toward green stormwater management? With the, the model coming from the previous bond in the South Gate neighborhood, uh, the extent to which we're able to, uh, move that forward under the current bond? And, um, and where our future lies in that direction?
Well, you know, it's, it's interesting, Pat. I, um, sometime on the, on the, on this committee, I feel like we're a little bit, uh, we're very orchestrated by staff. You know, staff builds the agenda, staff goes, um, this is what our, our mandate is. And I don't, um, really feel that it's in our purview as much to ask, hey, where is this train, where is this train, train going? And, um, I would invite, um, you know, we really lack, we do not have any interaction with councils. So we're an island of ourselves. And I think that it would be helpful over time hearing, you know, hearing this type of comment you're making, Pat, is, you know, that we could discuss issues of what is our master plan? But we, we are not, um, agendized to do that. Um, it's a much more mechanical process. It's a little bit, um, uh, frankly dull. But, um, you know, we, we do, we do our job. The one thing I might say is I try to make it not be dull. And a good example is that I've learned, you know, with the sister city work I do, I, I brought in a presentation from Mexico City where they do rainwater capture on roofs. It was amazing. It was so exciting to see, you know, to think outside the box. And a lot of times we're, we're a big bath, you know, we think everything in Palo Alto, we know everything in Palo Alto, but a lot of progress is being made externally. And we frankly are not adequately influenced, um, both in the area of goal and equally in the area of, of understanding best practice outside Palo Alto. So those are just some thoughts.
And I'll just say briefly that I think staff is probably correct that, that under the purview that we've assigned to the, uh, uh, committee that, that, uh, that's more broad thinking is, is not in the purview. And maybe we as a council need to reconsider whether this committee should be merely bond oversight versus stormwater oversight.
That'd be fun.
So council member Phil Seth.
Well, actually, I think, uh, I think you pretty, you pretty much talked about what I was going to ask about, which is sort of the discussion that we've had and we've done it, we had this a couple of times in the past on intergating with this commission, which is given the, the highly constrained nature of this role. You know, what are the, what are the boundaries and what are the limits of, of, you know, where are the opportunities for some creativity in this? And you know, I mean, Hal, Hal earlier talked about sort of working around the edges to try to do kind, some of that kind of stuff. Do you see that? I mean, that from what you've learned here, is there, is there more opportunity to sort of be creative within the constraints of the role? Or is it, or, or is it, uh?
Well, you know, if it, if it's just between us chickens, you know, I found that, um, you know, I had an idea that I felt that, I mean, this is, I'll just give you an idea I had and was trying to pull off and couldn't. Was we, we thought a lot about innovative, innovative practices and, and staff works really hard on creating webpages and websites. But I don't feel that they're adequate in terms of engaging, you know, face to face with the community. A good example is, uh, take a business like Tasset Hardware where a collaboration, you know, that within the bounds of what's allowed, could create a place where a community member could go and say, hey, I want to do rainwater capture. How do I do it? You know, where do I get a barrel? Where do I do this? And, you know, staff has us going to some place up in Santa Rosa, you know, to get a barrel and, and, and they, and, and they make it, it's just so hard. And I'm, I'm letting you know that you have these ideas of innovation. And, and I would love to push things a little bit more. Um, and it's, 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 it's challenging. I'm sure you know those challenges because staff works very hard. But, um, sometimes I feel like they, you know, it's like trying to un, open a door with your elbows. You know, they're going to work really hard, but, um, you know, only open so many doors with your elbows. And, and, and the issue, you know, some of the challenges in green infrastructure take more direct community engagement, going with me and finding it. So that would be, um, you know, I, I hope I'm responsive to some of the topics you looked it up.
So, so I'll jump in. I, 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 one thing we added was this idea that each board and commission would submit a work plan to council. And that work plan may be a way for you guys to raise the issue of your scope.
Yeah, we think that's very, we think that's very exciting. And, and I actually, I learned so much from that process that the city did. That was one of the best things I, I enjoyed. I mean, you know.
And the other thing I, I've heard several of you mention more community engagement. And is it, is it the elbow thing that's preventing that from happening? It seems like you all have wanted to do it.
Yes. I mean, you know that, that, um, there's no direct action in the city. Um, and everything is, you know, in stages and, and impulsive moves can't happen. So the notion of why, if we, if we wanted to work on rainwater capture, why is it? There's, you know, there's this relationship with Santa Clara Valley Water District that complicates things. And so if anyone wants to try and engage, engage in green infrastructure, it's frankly of an absolutely bewildering process and, and it's impossible to do. And I, and I can't break, you know, we as, as a committee member, you try and push through it and staff pushes back going, well, you know, the water district wants this and we need this and all these forms. And, and the, the issue was the effectiveness and the impact of green infrastructure at the residential level is going to be limited because of, um, you know, essentially the hurdles you go through. And I'm not trying to have this be a mudslinging thing, but I just wanted to let you know that, um, my role on the committee, a lot of times has been a proponent of let's try and make things happen. And, and it's been a, it's, 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 it's a, it's a, it's a difficult environment to, to, you know, accomplish that. And, um, I, you know, and staff's great and I've never, but it's, it's, it's just difficult to accomplish. So maybe the work plan would help and, um, but, um, and I think, let's see where, how that plays out over the next year. If I happen to be on, if you happen to choose me, I mean.
So we actually went all the way through your time. Oh, sorry. That's okay. Um, thank you for applying and, uh, have a, have a good day.
Sorry, over talking. Okay. See you later. Bye bye.
Thank you. And our next bracket of interviews is for the utilities advisory commission. There are two positions that are open. We'll start with John Bowie or John Bowie. John, if you can open your, or turn on your video and unmute yourself, we will begin your ten minute interview.
Looks like we got Phil in as well. There we go. Hi, John. Uh, thanks for joining us. So give you a minute or so to make some opening statements and then we'll ask you some questions.
All right. Uh, good evening. Um, my name is John. It's Bowie. Thank you though. Thank you very much for the opportunity to interview this evening. It's an honor to speak before the council in the light and, and to be considered for the utility advisory commission. Uh, just as some background, uh, for over fifteen years, I've worked in environmental and regulatory policy. I, I think I really cut my teeth though in utility policy following Hurricane Sandy in New York City. I was working at an energy policy think tank at that point and spearheaded an effort, um, to incorporate grid and modernization and other, um, efforts to sort of modernize the policy at Con Edison, uh, to better spend the money that they were being given following that. So they, they asked for two billion following that and we, we ended up, bending that into a distributed resource policy. Um, since that point, I've been pursuing different, uh, opportunities in the regulatory space and have really come to love the weeds of administrative, uh, law and rate making. Uh, beyond that, I have worked in telecoms, uh, groundwater recharge issues, uh, local tax and finance questions and hazard mitigation. Most recently, I've been working in public engagement on all of those issues, um, across California and throughout, in particular, the Southwest with Region United FEMA. Um, my inspiration though, overall to join the utility advisory commission is the fact that this is something that happens is based on public trust. Um, you know, a lot of people don't pay huge amounts of attention to their utility bills and how we direct these policies. And so that, that's something that I've always found pretty remarkable within the space. And so, you know, to be considered is an honor and I, I hope that I can bring my efforts to support the commission.
Great. Thank you for applying, Vice Mayor.
Yes. Um, so in your application, um, you reference, um, the need or the reality that wildfires and mega fires are causing us to, uh, reimagine how we build and operate our grid. And it, uh, it drives the issues of, uh, how we're going to have reliability and resiliency in particular as we're moving toward electrification. But either way, even without the electrification, it's a critical issue. And, um, and you alluded to issues around grid modernization. So, um, despite that I'm tempted to ask you more about your, uh, strategic communications in, uh, utilities, I'm going to stick to that topic. So can you talk a little bit more about, um, those issues and to any extent that you are familiar with where we stand on those issues?
Uh, so I think my position on, you know, those issues, we're looking forward at, at a major question. You know, there is a, a legal question, uh, just about how we handle wildfire liability. That's not one that we touch on, but in terms of building out the grid to support that, um, you know, we have new technologies that are coming along that allow us to, better storage being number one. Now that's something that's going on across the board. How can we coordinate those resources is another point, you know? It's various feeders and, and various substations. How can you coordinate all of that? And that's something where, um, you know, my experience is not particular in Palo Alto. And so it's coordinating across that whole distribution grid and, and transmission. So, um, how do we modernize to that? That is going to be an information question in a lot of ways that touches a lot on, on the telecommunications space. I think another aspect to it as well is incorporating some of the resources that we already have. You know, there's pretty exciting conversations around vehicle grid integration that could potentially kind of shore up some of those resources. So, um, yeah, it's a big issue that I don't know if I have a specific answer right now to it. I don't know if anybody does of, how can we maintain our electric infrastructure that is also backed up against our telecoms infrastructure and public safety at the same time? You know, this is just going to be a continuous issue that we deal with.
So, uh, we've got a lot of hands up. Five minutes left. Uh, that council member Phil Seth.
Hi, John. Thanks very much for applying. And I noticed in your application, you touched briefly on EV charging infrastructure in multifamily, uh, units, which is something that's, you know, that's, that's pretty important where we need to get to in Palo Alto. Have you got any direct experience, uh, with that, uh, on regulatory or the, the, the infrastructure side?
So that was something that actually came up in that first proceeding that I mentioned was how do we build out charging infrastructure, multifamily homes? And, um, you know, you have split benefit problems of like, people don't have access to their, to, to actually install that infrastructure. So it's something where you're moving kind of landlords to benefit their tenants in a way. So it is a, an incentive problem, I think, on some levels. That is coming down, I think, from what I know of the low carbon fuel standard where it's incentives are coming and how are we going to deploy them? Um, just kind of other issues with it, like it just park, it has to, it overlaps with the parking space too, where now do we, like, there's a lot of different codes that overlay this issue on top of that technical issue with just charging infrastructure itself. Um, like the, the technology is moving forward at a breakneck pace. Uh, rates of return on it are also evolving where right now it's a pretty tight, narrow window where charging companies have to, to do that. So how do we get it into multifamily homes? Um, I do, yeah, I have worked on this issue, um, in the regulatory space, uh, in different ways for years.
I hope you're, I hope you're going to tell us the answer tonight. Okay.
No, that's why I want to, that's why I'm like excited to apply is, you know, to be a part of developing this.
I'm going to go to council member Tanaka, since you haven't asked many questions tonight.
Thank you for applying. Um, so what's your thoughts about like the outages that we've been having, the power outages? And, you know, is it something which is kind of expected? Do you think it's like something that, um, is normal, something unacceptable? And if so, like what, what do you, what's your thoughts about? What do you mean? What do we need to do to fix some of this stuff?
Yeah. I, I mean, I alluded to it earlier, the inverse condemnation issue there, you know, there's a larger policy discussion about what needs to go on there. It's not, doesn't relate to local government about inverse condemnation of PG&E. Um, there's reform that needs to go on at that level, but I don't know if that's our, so that's my first answer is that there are some questions of how we assign liability in wildfires. Um, yeah, we are living, the, the next one that I kind of look towards is innovation in that space. And I think the RFI two, it's sort of request for innovative ideas is one of those that's touching off at the state level. How can we incorporate like new technologies into maintaining lot, like the line structure in a better way? But in reality, you know, this is a hundred year old infrastructure that we built and it was not designed to function under the current climate. So, um, there's a, a lot of investment that has to go on. There's a lot of patterns that have to go on to change that. And in the meantime, I, I think that we're going to be looking at distributed resources and looking to local changes in order to meet the PSPS problem.
Council member Cormac.
Anyone who loves the weeds of rate making will enjoy our utilities advisory commission meetings. Um, very quick question. What are two words that people who have worked with you would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Uh, I think fun is number one. Um, although that takes me maybe a minute to like get into that space of the fun one. I think the other one too is, is kind, is probably, you know, if, if those, those are two that I like to think people think of me. Um, I also, you know, my own personal one, I feel like precise and driven and all those, but I, I think I probably went out more on the personality side.
Thank you.
So, uh, we have just over a minute. If you want to make any kind of closing statement. I don't know, Greer, was your question large or small?
I, it could be, it could be pretty, it could be a, a, a long answer, I guess.
Okay. Yeah. So why don't you just go ahead, John, and, uh, give us a kind of a wrapping up statement?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of come back to the topic of the role of public trust in this commission that, you know, I, I, there's always that number stated of just a couple of seconds a month that people spend with their utility bills. And it's this larger issue where, you know, we're being entrusted with, uh, the community's public policy goals, like environmental goals as well as kind of the functioning industry of the area. And then also just the bottom line that people are dealing with. So that's a tremendous amount of trust that's being bestowed. And it would be, it's a real honor to be considered to serve in that space for the community. And then also just the bottom line that people are dealing with. So that's a tremendous amount of trust that's being bestowed and it would be, it's a real honor to be considered to serve in that space for the community. So thank you very much for meeting with me tonight.
Yeah, thank you. And I think the 10 minutes go quick.
Yeah, they do.
Have a good night.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next applicant is Carol Guthrie. Carol, I will promote you as panelist. If you can turn on your video and mute yourself, we will begin your 10-minute interview.
Hello? Good evening.
So thank you for applying. If you want to go ahead and give like an opening statement and then we'll just jump into questions.
I'll give a brief opening statement because I think I had a lot of information in my application. I've spent, I spent my entire career in, in essentially, even though I worked for natural resources in the oil industry and in the pulp and paper industry, my role was focused primarily on electricity and before electricity, it was natural gas and secondary, secondary transportation and trading. I, I served in the role throughout my career of essentially procuring energy supplies for facilities ranging from the equivalent of a residential in the form of a, of a small service station to large facilities like oil fields or refineries or pulp and paper mills that also had their own generation and were considered industrial generators. I helped craft AB 1890 as both a large consumer and as a, as an industrial generator. And, and, and yes, I will say it, I was against and my company was against the, the power exchange for exactly the reasons it failed. The independent system operator, I think, is a, is going to be a critical concept because in, in order to get grid stability and to address things like grid modernization and integrating green renewables, we have to have a system that is more fungible and that can handle things across a larger, a larger span, particularly when you're dealing with catastrophic events like wildfires that can be disruptive. A lot of the, the ability to, to manage getting source to, from supply to, to end use is going to require not just physical assets in grid, but infrastructure and IT are going to be critical. The blockchain technology and some of the, some of the algorithms that companies like Google in some of their more research arms are developing and are going to be critical in terms of being able to manage the integration of things like battery storage and, and renewable. So I'll leave it at that and let you ask questions.
I'll jump in. It's very interesting background on the energy side. I'm sure my colleagues will follow up. I'm curious what, what your opinion is about municipally owned broadband networks and kind of the role of broadband with the utility as well as just a service to, to residents.
Well, I think that broadband is, I'm not sure that, that broadband is going to play as important a role going forward. I think that it's, it is part of the communication spectrum, but I think that the technologies are advancing to where broadband, I think is going to become, I think that the, the way in which broadband will continue, I think, to influence is primarily in, in some of the regulatory precedents. It's, it's one of the early, you know, it still falls under the spectrum of regulated commodities or, or utilities. And, and I think that's where we have a lot of, a lot of modernization that will happen. I, I don't think that broadband is going to go away, but I think that it's not going to be as dominant.
Vice Mayor Burt.
Yeah. Our municipal utility has served our community extremely well for over a century with exceptionally low rates. And, and in more recent times with one of the most green supply structures of any utility. But with the challenges that we're facing and the transformations that are occurring in grid infrastructure, do you have any concerns about the ability of small munis to be able to respond and keep up with that rapidly changing environment?
Yes, my, my biggest concern really falls in, I, I look at this as two, two parallel markets, so to speak. The first market really is the, the physical asset and the, and the manner in which you bring technologies together and actually build out, right? So it's your capital. But you also have a regulated market that, that, that has a very significant influence. And the concern I would have for cities like Palo Alto is that when you look around Palo Alto and some of the, some of the infrastructure that it relies on, you know, tank, the power that gets delivered to Palo Alto and natural gas too is owned by entities like PG&E or our, or tank may be managing it or owning it. But you have externals and, and one of the things, one precedent that was set with AB 1890 was the competition transition charge and the public purpose charge. And I fear that cities like, like Palo Alto, even though we're not directly affected by, you know, the wildfires that may, may be devastating PG&E and the whole liabilities, all the liabilities that are accruing. The issues become, how are, how is the state going to pay for that? And is it going to be by putting a surcharge on transmission or on other types of services? And I fear, and to me, that's in the regulatory market or what I would call the, the advocacy world, the, the regulated rates. That's in the, you need to keep an eye on those, on, on what's happening in those markets. Because those are the ones that could come in and really make it cost prohibitive for a city like Palo Alto that may be able to manage its, you know, it may have doable goals and maybe even be able to raise sufficient capital to, to upgrade and modernize its, you know, maybe battery storage or substations or all the things within its city limits. But it does not protect it from being, from having your total utility bill to consumers end up being exorbitantly high due to externally imposed charges.
Thank you.
And I'm kind of passionate about that in case you didn't notice because I've seen it happen in more than one jurisdiction.
Councilmember Cormac.
Ms. Guthrie, thanks so much for applying. Clearly have a lot of subject matter expertise. Could you please tell us two words that people would use to describe you, people with whom you've worked? You know, at Chevron or Stanford or elsewhere, what would they, what words would they use to describe you and how you do your work?
I know you want two, but I'll give you three and one is hyphenated. It's
Fine.
Inquisitive, data-driven and leader. I'm, I'm, I'm a decision maker, but I want data. The data, you know, the data matters.
Agreed. Thank you.
So we have just over a minute. If you'd like to make kind of a closing statement.
Well, as I had left the, I had left the oil and gas or left the electric industry and even after I left, I did take a consulting engagement with the, with CalCCA. And one of the reasons I took the job at Stanford was aside from the fact that I'm really not cut out to just sit at home and do nothing is I really loved the opportunity to explore the humanities again. But as my husband, who's the one that found the position, said, you know, it, it seems like it would not be, it really wouldn't be an appropriate use of my time to just let my experience go unused when hopefully I could, you know, bring some experience or, or thoughts to bear for the city that I've lived in for three decades.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for applying. 10 minutes goes very quick. Thank you. And have a good night.
Thank you. And our next applicant is incumbent Don Jackson. Mr. Don Jackson, I'll promote you as panelist. If you can turn on your video and unmute yourself, you will have two minutes, 10 minutes for the interview.
Any is, there is. Donnie there?
Mr. Don Jackson, if you could turn on your video and unmute yourself, we will be able to begin your 10-minute interview.
There you go. Okay. So you've done this before. Yeah. Why don't you just jump in, give your opening statement and we'll ask you questions.
Sounds great. When I first interviewed for the UAC, I explained that the topic nearest and dearest to my heart was fiber to the home, but that I understood that supporting our existing utilities was the highest priority and I vowed to learn and contribute to their success with equal fervor. Two years later, I feel that I've made good on that promise. And at this point, my interest and enthusiasm for our electric utility and electrification is an equal, if not greater focus. I frequently go above and beyond my normal UAC workload and activities. I attended a multi-day NCPA overview series to learn more about utilities operations. And I recently attended the Energy Institute at Haas's annual power conference to gain insight into energy policy research. Over the past year, I've dug into the nuts and bolts of residential electrification. And I've undertaken to electrify my own house, both to practice what I preach and with the hope to use the resulting knowledge and experience to help others.
Thank you. I'll, I'll see any hands. So what has there been, what's the thing that surprised you most about being on the UAC?
Well, you're digging into my closing statement, but I would say that I'll go, I'll just go there anyway. I think that I, you know, I was a Silicon Valley engineer. So working in government, you know, working with the UAC, the other commissioners, working with council, working with staff, that's not something I was experienced in. So there was a learning curve. I'm still learning, but I think I'm a lot better than when I started out. I think I'm starting to be a lot more effective and I think I understand how, how things work better and I know how to do it. So, so anyway, that, that's, that was the biggest surprise.
Councilmember Stone.
Goodness, Mayor. Hi, Don. Thank you for your service to the city and for, and for reapplying. I'm, I'm curious as, I'm curious, what is your, what do you feel is your greatest accomplish so far, accomplishment so far on the commission and, and what do you hope to continue to work on if you, if you get a second term?
Okay, great. You're really, guys are really digging into my closing statement here. But anyway, so I think there's, there's, there's several things that I'm really pleased about. I think, you know, there was a, where was I? Well, when I first joined, I was sort of taking Commissioner 101 class with staff. They, one part of that, what they were explaining, this idea that they came up with for basically exchanging our sort of platinum level renewable energy credits and generating some revenue that way. The first time I heard that, I was pretty concerned about the carbonization impacted that. I stuck with it and through some guidance and research and help from them, I came to a conclusion, this is a great idea. And it was an opportunity for the utility and to raise about $15 million in a carbon neutral way. And when, when COVID hit, it was pretty obvious, it became increasingly obvious that that was a, an opportunity we really needed to take a hard look at. So I worked with staff and a fellow commissioner to try to highlight that opportunity both to the entire UAC and the council and ended up getting unanimously approved by both and we're all raising millions and millions of dollars. So maybe over five years, maybe it'll be 15. So that was an accomplishment. Let's see, I think, you know, I've, I've served on a couple, both years I've served on the budget subcommittee this year, in addition to its, its regular budgetary tasks, we, we worked with staff to, on the fiber, fiber expansion models in terms of how best to wrap our heads around that and to how we could explain that to the entire UAC and then also to council. So that's something that I've, I've had some contribution in as well. So those are the big two, I would say.
Great, thank you.
Councilmembers. What, what have you learned on your project, Don, in terms of electrifying your house? What, what's been hard to do?
So what was easy to do, I'll just start with that, putting in my hot water, heat pump water heater in the furnace HVAC. That was, that was really easy. I mean, it was, I mean, as easy as any big project is, but I, I had no issues with the building department or any, and co-planning. It was like really smooth, you know, it's, it's a big project and I had to project management from my family's perspective so that my wife wouldn't be without hot water for more than a couple hours. And I, that was, that was very, a very key goal and I accomplished that. So that was good. I think that when we get into other things like solar panels and, you know, storage systems, battery storage, our codes are really, it's a mess. Okay. It's, it's like going to, I don't know if you ever gotten a more home mortgage and then five years or 10 years later, gone and get refinance or got a new mortgage. And the list of requirements has just gone up. There's never a requirement that's gone off the list or a form. It just keeps higher and higher. And a lot of these things in electrification space are, were done when these technologies were very new and they were absolutely appropriate requirements. And now manufacturers have incorporated these capabilities into the equipment. And so you don't need to glom on six new other things on the wall of your house. You can just, it's, it's built in and, but the, the, I'm sorry to say, the bureaucracy doesn't keep up with this stuff. It's not their job. So we need to, we need to make this simpler and more straightforward and streamlined. I don't think we can do that without compromising safety.
Councilmember Phil said.
How hard do you think it's going to be to get to 80, 30?
Really, really hard. So, you know, I think the, you know, I think there's just some big decisions that need to be made, which is, you know, what are we going to sign up for? And, you know, I don't think it's just council. I mean, I mean, you know, it, it's the whole community. I mean, it's going to cost people money. I mean, we're not, it's, you know, money's not gonna, if, you know, my electrification costs me real money. And if, if people are going to retrofit their houses, you know, how, heat pump water heater is not that bad. If you do the HVAC, that's another big chunk of money. You know, it's going to cost money. And the question is, to what extent do people in Palo Alto want to be leaders in this area? Or do we want to just wait until we're forced to do it by the state or the federal government? And I don't know the answer to that. So I think it's going to be really hard and I think we just have to decide what is it that we're willing to sign up for and commit to as a, as a city. And I think it's important to set those expectations so that we can all put the right, the proper amount of, of effort into it. I think there's, we're in a danger, I don't know if it's a dangerous, right? But of putting a lot of planning into something that we're not willing to go do. Okay, if people are really not willing to sign up to electrify over the next 10 years, then there's a lot of planning and staff time and UAC time that's going into something that if we're not going to do it, why are we spending the time on it? Let's go, let's put our time on things that we are going to do. So I think we're, we're, we're coming up to, I don't know exactly when, but I think over the next few months, hopefully in the hopefully in the sort of within the next six months, sort of a more decision point on that. Um, and then we're gonna have to decide and then let's decide what we're gonna go do and then go do those things.
So i- if you have anything left in your closing statement, now's the time.
Okay, so um, so I guess I just I'd say that uh there's a lot of things that are exciting to me. I think that uh the financial estimates and operating models we might employ to create a citywide fiber network are soon gonna be considered by council. I really hope we can make that vital infrastructure a reality. I just said the things about the S cap goals. I don't need to say that again. Uh, I said the thing about uh, you know, I've I've learned a lot about how to work with staff, council, other commissioners. Um, you know, six, six months into my term, I didn't know, I really didn't see how it's gonna be able to accomplish anything at all. And I kept at it. And at this point, I'm pretty happy with what I've been, I've been able to help do. And I'm really excited and energized to continue to contribute what I can to help Palo Alto beat its goals. So finally, so over the last two years, I hope that I've earned your support. And if so, I'd be honored to continue serving on the UAC. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, for reapplying and have a good evening.
Good night. Thank you. And our next applicant is Phil Metz. Phil, I will promote you as panelist. If you could turn on your video and unmute yourself, we will begin your ten minute interview.
Welcome, Phil.
Okay. Good evening, folks. I know it's pretty late, so thank you all very much. By way, by way of introduction, my interest in UAC is particularly applying my experience in energy and physics uh and more recently in biophysical economics to help the city move to a more up-to-date, more effective climate action plan. Uh, I think there are a few, you know, key ingredients in this. Uh, I would say number one is measuring all of our uh emissions, I think using a consumption-based approach. Uh, staff has talked about this a little bit, but uh I think we're falling a little bit behind the curve and not implementing that. Um, in the area of renewable energy, uh, moving beyond increasingly move, it'll take some time, but moving beyond REX toward you know, actually delivering renewable energy when it's needed. And uh I think you can see leading companies moving in that direction. Google made an announcement last year of uh, you know, meeting their needs on an hourly basis. Um, and I I think another important thing, this is the reason behind our organization, the Biophysical Economics Institute, is evaluating programs, not just financially, which in financial metrics are pretty easy to game, but also in terms of uh biophysical metrics uh like energy return investment, which give you, I think, a much uh more accurate picture of the real energy implications and we now gas implications of decisions. So I I think that's the thing that is, you know, a prime interest to me and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers. Councilmember Corbin.
Mr. Metz, thank you so much for applying. Good evening. We're used to late nights, so no worries about that. Um, I wanted to ask you your question about the minimum habit about habitability during an emergency that you were talking about. What are some thoughts you have about how we could achieve that?
Yeah, I, as a uh BPC and and assert, um, you know, and our neighborhood is single-family homes and a lot of older people. So a lot of people have prescription drugs with a refrigeration. And I don't think anybody in our society can live for, you know, more than 12 hours without their cell phone. And certainly, if the regular phones are down, that's a problem. And so what I've talked about with uh with with Duker and a few other people is having something like maybe every 10 homes or every five homes. And you could talk about, does the city contribute to this or model it, or is it purely a voluntary basis? But having the very basic ingredients, which I think would be something like refrigeration, and it probably is driven by solar with storage, uh because if you don't have storage, the solar won't operate in an emergency. Um, but a minimal amount of electricity for phone recharging and refrigeration of medicines, if you had that pretty much the neighborhood, the buildings wouldn't, wood frame buildings will survive even a very large earthquake. And so the neighborhood would then be inhabitable and people would be able to stay in their homes and not become a burden to the rest of the city. So that was the basic thought behind that. Then we've been talking about, well, do we just sort of game this up ourselves? Or, you know, might the city have some involvement, which would be my preference.
Thank you.
My speaker, Bert.
Yeah, Phil, um, I I saw that in your background that you had been a a research fellow with Project Drawdown. And then you now uh have more recently co-founded the uh Biophysical Economics Institute. So um, can you just briefly share a little bit about your role in Project Drawdown and the research areas you're involved with? And what the institute does?
Okay, um, Project Drawdown, I did uh three studies. Uh, I I think you may know that Project Drawdown was done originally, I think it was 2016. Um, they did a revision, a major revision about two years ago. And so I led the, redid the chapters on heat pumps, uh, on district heating and cooling and on cool roofs and green roofs. So it's sort of three separate sections all connected uh with building energy. And the heat pump section also included uh heat pump hot water heaters. There's mostly focused on space cooling, but included water heating as well. Oh, and uh Biophysical Economics Institute, which is uh BPE Institute dot org, um, is focused on integrating the natural sciences with economics. Uh, this could be a whole, you know, another evening, but but essentially uh economics, but as normally practiced violates major laws of thermodynamics. And the idea is to incorporate uh laws of biology and physics, particularly the first and second laws of thermodynamics into economics. And that changes decisions, uh and especially uh is important to getting the right answer in uh terms of sustainability, uh, you know, actions.
Well, we have too little time to really grasp uh some of those things, but I'm, I'd be interested in in getting together in the future and hearing your thoughts more on that.
Yeah, we have a great website, uh, which has, I think, some great uh information on it. But but my view, this is the single most important thing, we're actually accomplishing uh environmental sustainability. I think the economics is the biggest barrier, that not the, not only the technology.
Thank you.
Um, I'll ask about uh potential for a new utility. So we've been evaluating expanding our fiber network to provide smart metering, but also provide maybe residential broadband service. Uh, do you have any thoughts on on a fiber broadband network to the home?
I would buy it. Um, I, you know, I I'm pretty knowledgeable in communications. I was a director of uh marketing for manufacturer in communication space, so I know that equipment well. Um, but I wouldn't, I don't consider myself an expert of it. I I mean, I think it would be a a cool thing to have. The US in general has pretty weak uh broadband, you know, compared to the rest of the world, the high prices and low quality compared to most of the world.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Phil said.
Talking your application about the need for locally generated renewables, but cost is a huge barrier. Now, how do we, how do we square that circle?
It's, it's a big, I I think there are two dimensions to it. One is, uh, and I think one of the other candidates spoke about this a little bit, uh, is two different things. One is having renewables that are actually generated at the time we use the energy. I think the use of REX is wherever it's generated locally or outside, the use of REX is actually destabilizing the grid. I think if you look at curtailment in the grid, it's increased exponentially over since about 2014. Uh, month of March, 2021 was the highest ever of solar wind curtailment. So I think that's the first thing is actually paying people to generate energy, renewable energy, when and where we need it. Uh, in terms of generating it locally, I agree, that's a huge problem. I know how expensive everything is here. I have a photovoltaic system. Um, it's pretty difficult to install and expensive to install a photovoltaic system. Some of that's just the nature of the local region, but I think Palo Alto is unusually large. I know for my EV and also for the photovoltaic system, you know, as soon as the contractor showed up to price it, you know, they just, they just said that, you know, they wanted to increase it, you know, X hundred, X thousand dollars. Uh, I mean, the EV charger had just, which was like under $2,000, had a, I think a $700 permit charge and because I insisted on having it uh permitted. Uh, people would have done it for a thousand dollars last without a permit. So I I think, and and Palo Alto has unique solar technical requirements. Uh, they, for example, derated by electrical system. Uh, you know, there are requirements that are just not customary throughout most of the rest of the country. So I think we could do a a better job of that um in 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 terms of of solar. But I I think I'm most concerned about locally having emergency power. You know, like a hospital sheds most of its, in an emergency, a hospital sheds ninety plus percent of its load, but has enough power internally to generate a little bit of it. And I think between the solar and the amazing amount of EVs that we have in the city, we could probably do a a much better job of generating uh local power, local renewables.
So uh kind of out of time, if you wanna do a quick closing statement.
Yes. Um, well, first of all, you know, again, thank you very much for uh interviewing me. Um, uh, as I indicated, my main area of expertise is in energy and in biophysical economics. Uh, I think I have excellent experience in that area. I'd like to move to uh implementing an up-to-date, you know, evidence-based kind of action plan, which includes uh consumption-based inventory and, you know, focusing on uh delivering renewables. And if you, if you haven't seen the Google plan, I would definitely take a look at it. They just published a white paper about six months ago on what they're doing to generate electricity at an hourly basis. It's a very, very difficult problem. You're you're completely right in in, you know, challenging, you know, well, how do you do that? But if you look at what they've proposed, uh, I think they face an equally difficult problem in doing that. And they propose some uh reasonable solutions, I think, to get closer to that. That that's really the key thing is to, you know, at least go in the right direction. And I I think it's a mistake, especially to to pretend that, you know, we could just keep buying REX that are generated at some time that we're not really using energy. I think that's actually destructive. That we're paying people to generate electricity in the wrong place in the wrong time. And we need to at minimum stop doing that.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you for applying.
Much, guys.
Thank you. And our last applicant, he is Raj Mahan Rajagopalan. Raj Mahan, if I can promote you as panelist, please turn on your video and unmute yourself and you'll have 10 minutes for the interview.
Hello.
Hey, Raj, if you've been watching, you you kind of know how it works.
Yes.
Uh, you can make an opening statement and then we'll start asking the questions.
Awesome. Thank you so much for the opportunity. And yeah, I had advantage of asking, listening to all of the other participants, applicants. Uh, you know, after listening, I'm probably least qualified based on what I heard. But I do bring some unique perspectives and uh my background could be very useful for the commission. So by way of introduction, I go by Raj, really long name. Uh, I recently uh moved to Palo Alto a couple of years back. I lived in Pacific Northwest in Seattle for about 14 years and uh um, I work at a company called Aplashian and leading the product management team for the cloud, cloud team. And throughout my career, I've been doing software and product management and uh really systems thinking and building big large-scale systems and dealing with failures, um, uh, things like that. So super interested in technology and recent, recently a climate, recently turned climate activist. For the last four years, I've been mostly carbon neutral, uh, with my energy consumption all powered by solar panels and driving electric cars and wherever I can, whenever there is a uh carbon, uh, you know, consumption, I try to make it neutral by participating in projects like Project Ren and uh, you know, whatever I can do to compensate for any carbon emission that I'm creating with the air travel and things like that. So it's a great opportunity uh to be here in front of you. Thanks for interviewing me. Uh, I have some more closing thoughts and uh but it's really, uh, it's awesome to be here in Palo Alto. It's a dream place where we wanna live and before moving here to California, we decided if you're not gonna live in Palo Alto, we're not moving. So we came here for uh uh, you know, for the people and how beautiful the city is and all the great things that's going on here. But, you know, recently also been uh surprised by what I saw with power failures and how it is, it was dealt with and things like that. So I felt like I have an opportunity to actually come in and contribute and make this a great place for everybody. So all for customers of Palo Alto, so our utility. So here I am. So please ask me any questions.
Great. Well, thank you for applying. I mean, it, one thing in Palo Alto, we are blessed by uh such a wide range of applicants.
Yeah.
But um it's always appreciated. And um I would just say, if you don't make it this time, please, please consider applying again.
Will do.
Yeah. Um, so you said you try to be carbon neutral. So do you buy offsets for yourself?
Yes, for basically, there is a, there are a lot of startups now these days where you can go uh tell your, like how you're consuming, what's your consumption, what's your, you know, footprint look like? And they suggest, okay, here is how much you can pay monthly as a subscription service to compensate for uh yeah, travel, wherever it's possible, I pay the carbon tax. If not, then I go pay this subscription to uh go check out a project called Project Ren. I'm happy to share that with the commission. Uh, there are a lot of startups coming up in the space for folks who are kind of uh being very, you know, conscious about their carbon footprint. So.
Councilmember Phil said.
Hi, Raj. Thanks very much for applying.
Yeah, thank you.
So uh, I'll I'll ask a non-unilities technical question then.
Please.
What do you think of Palo Alto's utility rates?
Uh, it literally rates, uh, okay, not the best. I paid a lot less in Seattle. And uh, you know, and P E T S on, uh, I think it's PGE, this was the uh PG or PSC, P E T S on energy. Uh, but again, I'm also, I have solar panels, so mostly the last month I produced about 400 kilowatts. I consume about 480 or so. So uh, in terms of electricity consumption, I'm getting very close to us. We get more and more sunlight. I'm getting to close, close to zero. Uh, but I do have, uh, you know, gas consumption for my cooking. That's the only thing which I'm planning to convert to electrify it. So then I'll be just on the electric, pure electric.
And uh, you know, wastewater and uh recycling and so forth. We do a bunch of that kind of stuff, too.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, I'm just talking about the electric, just comparing the electric charges for how how much I used to pay. That's just what I'm paying. It's it's slightly higher than for a, for a state with so much sunlight and, you know, maybe the, because there's so much hydro power in Pacific Northwest, it's a lot cheaper to generate power. It could be bad, but yeah.
I think they get rain, I think they get rain power in Seattle. No, just kidding.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Councilmember Corbin.
Thanks. Um, Mr. Rajagopalan, close. Nice to meet you. Thanks for applying. Um, so my standard question is how people do their work and what are two words that people who work with you at Lassian or elsewhere would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Uh, they would say a problem solver, you know, uh, I'm leader naturally, I like I take on problems and new initiatives and, you know, move it forward. That's, that's a couple, and I would, we can add one more, probably learner, have a growth mindset. Like, like even though I'm new to this, I'm like digging in, learning what are the best city commissions out there, what they're doing, what can we do here, you know, things like that. So I like to learn new things. That's part of the reason why I'm applying, so I can learn some of these stuff. So, yeah.
You described yourself as a systems thinker. What, what if you, just based on what you know about our utilities at this point, what sort of systems thinking should we be doing that we're not doing?
Yeah, I have great examples, just from the two power cuts in the last 30 days that I experienced here in all Palo Alto. Uh, in the last 20 years, I experienced four power cuts and a couple of movies. In the last 20 years, I experienced four power cuts and after moving to the US. And two of them were like extreme snow situation, whatnot, but two out of the four came out in the last 30, 30 days here in Palo Alto. That's both of the times, the experience of either reporting it back or systems failing completely where I'm not able to report for failure or how we dealt with, it would be, you know, power manager, the fact that it, there's an act to active outage and how we are communicating it. The Twitter handle was silent, you know, I, I was like, oh my God, if I had to run like an incident management, how we do things in in real world? How would I run it? How would I, you know, how would I inform every citizen automatically when the power goes out? How would I inform them, you know, send a text right away when power is restored or ETA? So I just so much opportunity. I, that's one of the main reasons why I was motivated to apply for this, because I, I feel like, oh my God, you need somebody who can think end to end, think about failures, think about dealing with failures and drive the thinking, the commission to provide a great experience to great Palo Alto residents. I think they deserve it. A lot of them are technologists. I see them complaining about how can you do incident management like this and stuff like that. So I thought I'd do something about it by applying here and maybe, you know, figure an opportunity and improve some of those things.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Have you had the opportunity to attend a UAC meeting or watch a UAC meeting?
I, I've not, you know, I, I've not had this opportunity before. So this is the first time I was listening today. Actually, I didn't even know it's all of it is public and anybody can actually join in and listen in until recently. So whether I get in or not, I plan to do that and hopefully I can continue providing recommendations.
Yeah, you can sign up and get the agendas and then you can connect on Zoom or I think even on YouTube.
Yeah.
So sometimes they're very interesting topics.
Yeah.
So we have just a few minutes left if you want to make like a closing statement.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, like I said, this is the place where a lot of technology, magic and wealth creation happening, you know? Like I said, one of the reasons we decided to live here in Palo Alto and this specific location was this is where fantastic city, great schools and people around me. I just live around the corner to Larry Page and Steve Jobs. These are all like my idols and heroes who live close by. And these guys have like created technology that's three billion, four billion people are using. And there's so much opportunity, just, it's really disappointing to see a place like this, why can't it be a leader in the United States, not only in California, but leader in the United States and reaching, you know, zero carbon city and things like that. When you look at the list, Palo Alto is not even there, not even considering when I look at places like Eugene, Oregon, or Aspen in Colorado. I think there's so much the city can do. There's so many forward thinkers and I'm sure we can find the funding to, there are quite a few billionaires around here. But there's so much the city can do. I feel like I can come in and hopefully, you know, push some of this agenda to get to that, get to the point.
Great. Well, appreciate your comments. Again, thank you for applying and staying up to be the last candidate tonight.
No, it's still early for me. I work in Sydney time, so.
I do like your products, by the way.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. Feel free to send me any feedback, anything you have that I can pick it up.
All right. So, so good night.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, council, to paraphrase the car talk guys, you've managed to waste another perfectly good evening serving your community. So thank you and good night.